At 7:10 and at 7:45 or thereabouts will continue public hearing for the special public application, dog, daycare, training, playgroup. So, the minutes, we do not have minutes for tonight, but I was wondering because a lot of them were sent out for you to review because of the importance of these two items. Anybody just have any comments about the minutes that you read? Or is everything okay? Peter? Okay. And now the financial report is here.
Yes.
So, the financial report for the month of September was payroll warrants for the town planner and planning administrative assistant payroll, pay period ending 9/1/2018 was signed by me, pay period ending 9/15/2018 signed by me, and pay period ending 9/29 signed by me. Esco account invoices for Joseph Sawatka Engineering Services related to Newbury Golf Center was signed on 9/26/2018. And so, we're going to skip around a bit and go to Martha, who's our town planner, and have her, a bit of her town planner report, okay?
First of all, an 8/15 appearance from Jeffrey Roloff's for the 170 Orchard Street OSRD is being deferred until the next meeting, October 17th, as they went on ready.
Not ready. Okay.
So, hopefully, I've asked for all the remaining pieces of the application to be in by next Wednesday so that they can be reviewed and we can make sure the application's complete before it gets submitted.
Okay, and so Roloff's is now representing Chairman Cross Properties?
Other things, we're still, we had some final revisions for the green ER or greener site plan review and water supply or rain protection district applications. We expect to be getting those submitted fairly soon as well. They're also going to be submitting those in attempt to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So, one thing they hadn't really considered was the fact that the project isn't in the MS4, and I thought that's going to make any changes to what they proposed, but I think they will at least reference it because they hadn't done that for stormwater management. At the next meeting, we are, the Donors Academy is going to be doing another faculty housing unit off of Bell Street, and Town Council had advised that even other single-family residences, we should look at them as site plan review. It may be a level one, so kind of a minor.
Right, I was just going to say it couldn't be a major, that's what you're saying.
So, although I want to confirm that with her, but her concern particularly was on access to fire trucks and things like that, just so we can review it.
Have they at all given any indication of the phase two of their environmental building in terms of what they want to do down in the park roof?
Haven't got any.
Haven't got any?
No.
Okay.
They are also, at the same time, Cameron will also give a presentation on the proposed OSRD on Holman Road. That's pending for a while, but he wants to ask the board's opinion on, because a new regulation entitled five of bathrooms and shared septic systems. So, that will be.
So, also, I was thinking, Martha and I were at the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission's last meeting, which was two weeks ago, this coming Thursday, and they did a couple of things, but one of the things, which was a focus on Newbury and all the work that MVPC has done with Newbury over the past year, and longer than that actually, and it was really, it was terrific because they, we were the first town in the Merrimack Valley region that had their housing production plan approved by the state, and we did get a couple of kudos. Now, size might have something to do with it, but we were also very, very congenial, I think, as we were working with the consultants. And of course, this plan was all done at no cost to the town, which is just terrific. And a number of selectmen who were there at the meetings, I know that attended them, I know they felt it was pretty good, and we did as well, and so we're very happy with that. But they also, of course, have spent a lot of time with John O'Connell on the MS4 issues and all the stormwater issues. Obviously, Peter Pippen and the work that he does with Jeff and the Sandy Grants is just an extraordinary amount of money and concentration and effort on the town, and so it really took up, you know, 45 minutes just talking about Newbury, which is really pretty, pretty cool. So, we're pretty happy with that. So, with that, the great little clock on the wall says it's 7:10, and so I'd ask the colleagues from the Board of Selectmen to come up here and join us, and we'll begin the public hearing.
Damon?
Thank you.
Can I get a motion over?
My motion.
Your second?
Second.
Sorry.
The Planning Board will now open a continued site plan review public hearing. It's considered, the Planning Board is considering an application for modification to a previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, for the Newbury Golf Center 131-133 and 151 Scotland Road, assesses map R43, lots 2, 11, and 4B. Our approval requires a three-fifth, three out of five votes for the Planning Board. An original site plan was approved and granted on November 15th, 2017.
The Board of Selectmen is considering application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center Inc., for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131-133 and 151 Scotland Road, assesses map R43, lot 2, 11, and 4B. Requires four-fifths votes of the selectmen, and a special permit was granted November 15th, 2017. So, what we're going to be doing tonight is what we've done in the last series of sessions with the Golf Center, is that we're going to go through the conditions that we set forward back in August. And in particular, not all of them, but the ones that may be still out there, and we will read them. Then we'll ask the applicant to respond to those, and then respond to also questions that were put forward by a letter or an email that went from Martha to Eric and others regarding tonight's meeting. And then there are some letters that we've received, and I'll be reading those, and then after all of that input, then we'll open it up for public comment, okay? So, with that, I'll read number nine. These are the conditions that were set back in August. Many of them have been met, but these are three that, four, excuse me, that were still out there. Schedule of work, number nine, condition number nine, the schedule of work shall commit to completion of all landscaping and grading as required above by no later than October 1st, 2018. Our note here is that by October 1st, the deadline was not met, trees have been planted, however, in the wetland, resource areas grading was not been completed, site not seeded, screening plantings and mitigation plantings outside of resource area is not done. So, that's the, from ARC 22. Following the sidewalk, the applicant shall submit a full and complete landscape plan addressing the remaining areas of the site. The abutter mitigation plan noted later than September 6th, 2018, i.e. three business days before the September 11th, 2018 meeting, the date proposed for a further session of the continued public hearing. Nothing has been submitted to date. Consensus seemed to be that the grading needed to be completed before determining the full scope of the required screening. Condition number 12, applicant shall, upon approval of the landscape plan, provide a cash bond or substantially equivalent security in an amount deemed sufficient by the board to cover the cost of replacing failed plantings so that no less than 90% of those plantings survive for at least two years, and that we've not received the cash bond, but it's related to the fact that we haven't received the plan. The applicant shall, condition 16, applicant shall provide suitable and appropriate dust control measures and erosion and sediment control as conditions dictate, at all times until the site is landscaped and stabilized. Such measures shall be consistent with accepted industry practices, local and state regulations, and with their recommendations made in SWIP reports. Now, dust control has been an ongoing issue. E-Sword is in fine on 9/18/2018 for violation, see email from Sam Jossen and Packet. No new SWIP reports received to date.
So, Eric or Michael, if you want to just give us a update on those four conditions as well as other progress that you've been making, and let's go from there, okay?
Okay. The update, I really, I think almost everybody here has been on the sidewalk or stopped by to see the property. We didn't get our grades the last three weeks. It's been quite a bit of rain, so in preparation for that, what we're planning on doing is Friday, we're seeking the entire site to stabilize it for the winter. Been working with Scott Cameron here, new engineer, on getting the site stabilized and ready for the winter. We're going to essentially shut down construction, almost everything. We do want to talk a little bit about the building. We can talk about that later, but that's where we are right now, with the grading to get that site stabilized.
So, you'll get the site stabilized Friday, and then probably no more activity for a while, is that right?
No, the only thing, ask the board is the building, we did miss that window with Morton, so I don't know, I'm working with them.
Okay, so you want, you want us to consider whether you can proceed and put the building together and put it up?
Even if I could, yeah, and even if I do proceed, I might not be able to do that with Morton's schedule and the schedule, so if not, I will need to put that building in storage on site for the winter. It can't stay on the ground. It will be ruined if the building stays on the ground, so I need to store it for that support.
And your preference?
I do need to store it and then probably find out what, because it's getting wet with this weather and looking at the forecast, I can see the wood starting to bow a little bit. I really want to get it off the ground and get it in storage sooner or later, and then figure out a plan of attack. I can always take it out of storage, but Morton's moved on to another site.
Okay.
So, you got to weigh the weather, their schedule, there's a lot of factors going into that, and that would be the only thing we would go, going forward in the winter would be that.
So, there's a possibility you'd store it for a month or two and then come back in December and want to put it up?
Yes.
What does storage on site look like?
So, it would be probably a tractor trailer that would come and just store it on that right by it and put it in there. That's the only thing that would be on, they recommend, and it gets it off the ground and keeps it dry.
So, would you keep it on its wheels, or would you just bring a shipping container in and dump it?
Probably keep it on its wheels, because it's, you know, keep it on the wheels and store it. That seems to be the best option, and that's what they recommend to do for that. So, that's where we are with, with the site right now. Number 11, mitigation plan, I did submit something last time, but the landscaping plan kind of Neil had done, Neil McCarthy.
I don't remember the abutters mitigation plan. That would have been, I mean, certainly you've done some planting at Laura's property, but you've not done, you've not really done the carbons.
The carbons, we haven't, and that's one of the things we've talked about is.
That you want to do some berming and stuff, and that makes sense.
I know the dates, you know, on here is September 11th, but I thought we agreed at prior meetings that until we got the sites, the department done, the building up, and we had a visit on site with the board.
That's my understanding.
That was my understanding too. That was just a government.
Yeah, which is that.
Current standing.
It just said it was part of the condition.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the note notes that, that it was agreed, that the grading was done.
Okay. We want to see more.
So, I think that's 11, and that's kind of 12 as well, because we got to give you the plan until you come back and tell us what you want for the bond.
But at the sidewalk, you, I think both were talking about that you were getting some advice from some of your contractors, that you might want to do some berming.
Yeah, that was.
And that, which would then reduce, reduce and make more impactful the kind of landscaping you're going to put up.
And I think that's a conversation I have to have with them before we do go through with that and what they're comfortable with.
We agree with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't do anything without having a conversation with them, but that was a recommendation from the contractor.
And I also don't think we would do it until we have the building up so that everyone can see it. I think it's got a.
And I think that kind of goes with the bond, once we get that all set.
I agree.
And we're going to bond. So, kind of. 16, the SWIP reports, we do have three, Scott has three that he's presented today to you, with our plan of action for the winter, outline what's going on. Obviously, I did get fined. We are, we did submit our plan of action and what we do when there's mud on the mud or dust. I think that's.
Were you fined once?
Yes.
Just from timing perspective, do you want to give everybody an idea of, you know, winter into spring, thinking for dates?
Yeah, so I think, some of the issues I think that we want to tackle today, but I think is more productive to tackle when we come back, is, you know, we want to come back 30 days prior to any construction, real construction going on other than the building. So, our goal would be to come back in front of you around February 15th. Now, weather's going to dictate, obviously, we have ten feet of snow on the ground, it's going to, you know, we're not starting on March 15th, but to come 30 days prior, to come in front of you with a plan of action with our construction schedule, how we're going to go about doing this, and obviously address any concerns the boards have going forward.
We'd also give the engineers a chance to see and confirm that the site held up over the winter, that what they're going to describe to you now worked, took place, and to the extent that there's anything we would need to do before we start spring construction, we would have the opportunity to have visited it, maintained, looked at it, we're back to want it and take any steps to the extent they were necessary prior to the start of the summer construction season.
The, I want to know if any board members have any further questions at this point in time? I did want to go over some of the items that were in Martha's note to you earlier this week, but anybody else?
I have.
George?
No, I have none.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
I have some good questions that I don't know if now's the right time to ask them or if you want to hold off till later. I think the answer to the question about shoring up the site to winterize it with the grass, it's going to happen by Friday.
Friday, to see it's going out, yeah.
We're going to finish the final grades in the spring.
Yes.
So, even though that means digging up the grass you planted.
It's a winter rise, so it'll only last in the winter, it won't.
Okay.
Let me, is there a question?
Yeah.
I have a question about who's doing your landscaping. Is Anne, is she still?
No, Neil McCarthy, who worked on that plan with Anne, is putting all the trees in his, his firm.
Okay, so Anne is no longer working here?
Yeah, yeah, just Neil is.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to go into that. Also, Scott.
I can talk a little bit about lighting if you wanted to. May I address that?
Sure. And then Scott, you've got a presentation about.
Yeah, just, just an update for the origin control work.
That'd be great.
A little bit of the last few weeks. So, that'd be great. So, let me talk a little bit about the lighting, because obviously I got the ladder from the Hamlets, and obviously that's an issue, and it's something, obviously we addressed a little bit last year, but one of the things, Musco Lighting, and I talked to him, he's going to get a light to show you. Now, it's going to be a third of the stuff, the size, it's not, they only do a third, and he will bring it to a meeting when he gets it. Now, they can't do a light in the field, they don't do that. I've asked him three times, again, said they don't, they just do not have a temporary light or a light that they use, and to put another light's not going to represent the technology that Musco has.
How much do those lights cost individually?
I mean, that would be $50,000 to $75,000 to do one light.
Yeah, it's a little more expensive than I expected.
And you'd have to get power up there, I mean.
I have a suggestion, thinking about this lighting issue, which I'm sure is a big one, might be one of the most difficult issues we have to deal with. And I recently did a lighting project in my church for lighting a steeple, and we put in Jesco LEDs, and we learned that they are adjustable, but in 40 watts, which by the way replaced 500 watt incandescence, but, and these 40 watts could be adjusted down to less than 20. So, one approach to this would be to go ahead with the stanchions that are proposed, get the lights up, and then get together and adjust them to a level that meets the needs of you and your voters.
Do you, Eric, do you know that the fixtures they're using are dimmable?
I don't know if they're dimble, I know they're adjustable on which way you put the light.
Yeah, just change the, change the light.
I bet they're dimble.
I would have to ask.
Ask them.
I would ask them.
I'd be surprised if they weren't.
I mean, they're the leader in sports lighting in the United States, I think.
I think that's, Jim, I think that's a good idea, but it sounds like we don't need to address that until the spring.
Yeah, I.
But it's a good idea to put on the table.
Yeah, at this stage of the game, talking about lighting is premature, not to minimize the issue, really.
No, I think it's one of the most critical issues.
But right now, it's premature.
Now, this model that they're planning to bring in, is there any reason we can't take a bucket truck or a lull, run it up 50 feet on that and use a generator and power it up so we can look at it in different locations?
I don't know. I don't know if it works or it's just showing you the light and what it looks like, I don't know the details, I will find that out, and I'll ask them.
Because I think, you know, getting a light, one of their lights, out there on site, even if you have to pre-buy one light that's going to go into your array later so that we can resolve this so that we know what we're looking at and we know the problem we're trying to solve, would really help in getting this moving forward, because I think that's what everyone wants. We've had a lot of hearings, I'm sure we're all sort of looking at each other here. So, finding a way, Musco will do it for you, finding a way that you can get it done, I think would make a big difference.
Let me talk to them and find out, you know, even if it's a third of the size, and if it does work, we get it up there.
I mean, we can always, so I think, you just have to put third of the size, and you put it up there. Everyone's going to look at it and say it works, and then you're going to put the actual lights up, and then somebody's going to come in yelling and screaming.
Don't do it as third of the size.
Like, I'm going to, I appreciate that you're telling them you're going to do it, but it's either got to be the exact fixture.
Exactly.
Or it shouldn't be anything. And if Musco tells you that they, they're not going to take apart a $50,000 light fixture, then I think the answer is what I said on the sidewalk, which is, you don't have to give us a certificate of occupancy, and Eric is just going to have to understand that he's not entitled to open if he puts up light fixtures and they don't comply with the lighting plan.
But the reality is, I wasn't aware of the cost. I would like to know the cost, but you're basically saying you've got at least 10 to 12 of those stanchions?
Yeah.
You know, a $600,000 investment that you don't, can't use?
Again, look.
I'm just trying to be.
I'm going to go to Mike Barry, I'm going to tell Mike Barry, you're going to tell me before you put these in that these match the plan, that he presented to the board.
Well, we have concerns about the stanchions, we also have concerns about the lighting in and around the pro shop, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, it's, lighting is, lighting is critical because it's directly related to landscape solutions.
So, probably putting the one on the building shouldn't be difficult. That, that might be a compromised solution, and that's a great comment, that it's around a shop as well, maybe putting the one on the end of the building so that everyone can see how it works.
I guess I am more than chagrined to hear that Musco says they can't put a model up there.
Yeah, I'll bring you that.
I mean, I mean, in, in every field of endeavor, there are models that architects and engineers bring in and show boards to say, see, this is what we're going to build, and it happens all the time, so I'm just surprised to hear that Musco says that, that big outfit.
I'll bring it up to the next meeting.
Okay.
I think, John, it would have to be exactly the same height and exactly the same location, so that, if it, how tall is it?
50.
50 feet.
I mean, that gets to be hard to do, because I don't see where one light at some elevation different from the plan is going to really tell you anything. You can do it, but I, I don't see where it's legit. It's an option.
Well, we can talk about that when we have a little session on lighting.
Who's going to be checking that the planting takes? Because you're spraying seed on Friday, by next weekend, it should be starting to sprout. On the sidewalk today, talks about the fact that it rained cats and dogs, and you'll have big piles of seed in a few areas and no seed everywhere else. So, what is the plan for making sure that that?
So, I'll be checking in on reseed if it doesn't.
So, it'll be on you, and you'll be?
Yeah, it'll be on me, obviously Scott's doing SWIP reports, I mean, he's certifying that it's going to be, you know, secure in the site, so we're going to put, that's why I'm doing it now, so if it doesn't take, we have a week or two to redo it.
Okay. Do you want to leave this lighting issue for a while and get on to the Scott Cameron? Because I don't think we've resolved any of that. Scott?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Scott Cameron, the board Cameron Group co-owner, office at 66 South Street in Darris, Massachusetts. Eric spoke about a month ago or so, joined the team, helped kind of get things, finish up for this winter and progress through for the rest of the project. So, I've been on the site several times over the past few weeks, watching it progress, and what I wanted to submit to you tonight, this is our, a letter I wrote with recommendations on my, after my first sidewalk, which was during that nasty rainfall we got a few weeks ago, it was actually my second sidewalk, and it's kind of evolved through even today with recommendations on what we're going to do short term, if it's stabilized, why we're doing it, and then what's going to happen over the winter with an eye towards, you know, the next spring when the, when the weather breaks. I'm going to read through this, I don't have enough copies for everybody, but that is one for the board of selectmen.
There's a one that I think you thought, and Eric was here.
Yeah, I think, I have, okay, so, do you want to copy this? So, I have a few extra copies here. So, obviously with the weather against us, not just the rainfall, but also that the temperature is dropping, we're kind of at the end of the season, they've done a tremendous amount of work despite that over the past few weeks with the manpower they have. So, we developed a set of short-term goals to get this at this point in time today, and then we have long-term goals, what we want to do over the winter, as far as monitoring inspections and oversight, looking towards next spring. So, the first apparent thing to me was that because the grading was all underway, there was, they needed more control of what was happening with the grading, specifically if stormwater went off. It was kind of going everywhere, and there weren't enough measures on the site and also at the, at the low points of the property to control it. So, one of the, one of the big, the biggest goals we had was getting various of site graded in a manner that their water would collect towards the site instead of away from it into shallow depressions and areas to detain it on the property, control it with channels and trenches to get it going where we want it to go, and then also stabilizing and grading any of the slopes around the perimeter. There's some bigger slopes around that back area, grading those in a manner where the water's not going over the slopes and washing them out, but grading away, so the only water really falling on the slopes is where it actually lands on, not, not water coming across the site. So, they've been working really hard trying to get to that point, and I was, I was very satisfied walking it today. See, the job, yeah, it's generally very flat, you know, as flat as they could, especially in proportion, areas are sloped towards, I do have a plan, if you're still inclined, I can walk you through that, but I could probably scrap a lot of this, but they have the, the areas graded towards depressions and swales. We cut in a trench and channel along the main construction road coming up, which captured a lot of the water coming out the hill towards Scotland Road. We kind of ghosted in the large infiltration pond that'll be down, that's kind of the last control before. from it into shallow depressions and areas to detain it on the property, control it with channels and trenches to get it going where we want it to go. And then also stabilizing and grading any of the slopes around the perimeter. There's some bigger slopes around that back area, grading those in a manner where the water's not going over the slopes and washing them out, but grading away. So the only water really falling on the slopes is where it actually lands on, not water coming across the site. So they've been working really hard trying to get to that point. And I was very satisfied walking it today. See, the job again, it's generally very flat, as flat as they could, especially in proportion. Areas are sloped towards, I do have a plan, if you're still inclined, I can walk you through that, but I could probably scrap a lot of this. But they have the areas graded towards depressions and swales. We cut in a trench and channel along the main construction road coming up, which captured a lot of the water coming out the hill towards Scotland Road. We kind of ghosted in the large infiltration pond that'll be down. That's kind of the last control before we get to Scotland Road. So that's shaped in to start with the winter. And we have a lot of water grading down there. So the short-term goal is really geared at controlling the site, because it seemed a little out of control when I saw it for the first time. And I feel today that things are going to stay where they're tolerable, or if there needs to be some maintenance over the winter, it's something that we can jump on and adjust on the fly over the winter. So in addition to the grading, which was the primary focus, we shored up all the silt areas around the site. We've got extra stockpile now, stockpile of silt fences, silt socks. I put another sign up for the EPA tracking number, which goes inside, so it's the DPA tracking number for road control work. And then Eric mentioned they're going to seed the entire site with the winter ride, which should take, I think it's early enough, or we should get some pretty good stabilization. They might have to do it again if we get ahead of rainfall. But because of the way we graded it, we're trying to avoid areas where there's going to be channelized or concentrated flow that's going to wash out a lot of that seed. So my hope is that, you know, despite some touch-up areas, we should get the majority of it. I'm hoping ninety percent are better to stabilize before the use.
So the twenty-seven acres that are on this property, how many acres will get the ride?
I haven't measured, but it's all the exposed dirt areas. Yeah, it's a principal area.
So wherever, seed the road, everything.
Yep, right.
So those are really the short-term goals. That's been over the last few weeks since I really started getting involved with this, plans to stop work. I was a big proponent of keeping the opportunity of getting the buildings done this winter, if the weather permits and construction contractor schedules permit, because it's just more area that we can get stabilized and finished over the winter. So we're not worrying about that next year when, you know, the rain season starts up again. So if they can't get that done, I think that would be a great thing to do over the winter, even though, you know, it's a small part of the site, but it's something. Then over the winter time, really, this is, with work stopped, this is about oversight, inspections and keeping an eye on it. Initially, we're out there at least once a week. We've been going out probably two times a week over the last few weeks. After it's seeded, we're going to go at least once a week, being sure that Eric's there ahead of and during rainfalls. So he's on site looking at it. We're going to be there just after, making sure things are fine and we're making adjustments as we need to go. As the seed stabilizes, we get a couple of things, we'll decrease the frequency of inspections. When things freeze up, we can decrease it less. So that's really, you know, when we're out there on site doing these inspections, it's kind of a call, you know, depending on how things look. And of course, every time, you're going to really call over for the things, we've got to go back out. So it's about oversight. We have emergency stockpiles of gravel on site in addition to the hay bales and silt fences. So if he needs to grab the golf cart and gravel with the pit and check in, there's a diversion, we can do that on the fly. And so that's kind of the overall plan. And then as soon as the weather breaks, which I think will be the earliest, you know, March, mid-March, in that, you know, somewhere in there, but it could be as late as May, depending on how we do with the winter and the snowfall and temperatures, we'll start construction up again. And I think, it sounds like we'll be back in for briefing and a few, you know, probably four months under our belt of seeing things over the winter, talking about. So I do have, at least of the three inspections we did out there, I do have copies of inspection logs we took together. So this outlines everything we were talking about. Eric's been very cooperative with us and the site contractor in getting these things done, as I've been describing, you know, what needs to happen. It's been pretty reactive in the few weeks I've been out there. So I was satisfied with the condition today. I don't think they should be doing any more work at this point. I think the seed is good.
So no more grading, the seeding will be done, and that's really going to be it, aside from this issue of the structures. So what more do they need from us? Martha, do you know? I mean, what kind of permissions do they need? They've got permission to correct the building. You're basically going to stop work for a while.
Yeah, and we want to come back thirty days before roughly March fifteenth, because we want to come and report back on winter conditions. And then we want to come back and present a plan for the spring going forward.
Okay. All right, I'll, any...
I'm sorry if I...
No, sure.
I just had a chance to look this over. This is a question, not a statement, but these are representations made by the applicant. This is something that we're incorporating of a condition that the applicant shall adhere to, the terms set forth in their September nineteen twenty thousand letter.
I guess I assumed that.
So that it's incorporated into...
What he just said, I assume they're going to be doing. He's paraphrasing what the letter is. So yes, let's do that.
Yeah, this is...
But just to formalize it, because...
Let me make the following suggestion. What if we added a condition that says, "All other conditions and dates in the conditions right now are told, these will be other than the building. These shall be the conditions for the winter." And that the applicant shall appear before this board. We could either pick a date now, or pick it, you know, January or about February fifteenth, and have these serve as the interim conditions tolling the other conditions other than the building.
And just so it's clear, I mean, my concern is just that this gets incorporated by way of a vote in the conditions, so that it's something that we can actually monitor and enforce along with you.
And I'd like to know what that actually looks like, monitor and enforce and oversight.
And from my perspective, this would get incorporated into the, let's see, we have eighteen conditions already. So this would become one of the same. And the significance of that is you have zoning enforcement officer who can enforce these conditions. And if this letter becomes part of the castle with that, there are consequences for not enforcing. If it's just a representation, although we're all proceeding with faith, we hope they comply. But the town's enforcement options are more limited unless and until it becomes an enforceable condition of this board's permission. So that would be the point in voting it into, if the conditions are already approved.
Something that these, what I'm describing, this is already covered in both the order conditions issued by the Conservation Commission and the EPA Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is permitted federally. This is just in keeping with what you're supposed to be doing under that. So enforcement is all already in place through those permits.
So this would just be an extra layer of enforcement?
Right.
Okay. I want to...
Any comments on or feelings about that?
Other guys?
No.
It's a good plan.
I'd like to know, and I'd like to see the right time, to the right time, about enforcement and how we, I know we had asked our enforcement officers to have regular reports. I'd like to know if those have happened and what the history has been with that. Is now the right time and one way to do it?
You can ask Sam?
Yeah, remember that too much. So the week of September ninth, we had daily contact with the project manager. Same thing on the seventeenth, eighteenth, eighteenth, those fines. That was the Monday when we had the dry conditions. We had the neighbor complaint. I went out, took a look, and even was corroborated by the site manager that he had a little dry twizzing the other day. On the nineteenth and twentieth, I believe those were the first two heavy raining days. He did not reach out to me, kind of making the assumption where no work went on, happened on site, that there was no, nobody to contact me. I talked to him then on the twentieth and let him know that, you know, despite the, you know, possible non-work days, please, you know, just follow the conditions, do a daily report, just so that we're in compliance with what the board's ordered. Through the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth, I did call him on the twenty-eighth, because I did not hear from him on the twenty-fourth at six or seven, asked him again to please, you know, do the daily calls. As of this, we've had not heard.
So this is the, this is the format, correct?
Yeah, so we didn't do any work this week. Should shut it down after, so he wasn't...
So I think I remember at the last meeting, I asked you to ask him to be here as well. He's, is he here?
He's not here, no. He's pulled, he's wrapped up, obviously, for the winter. And he's on to another job. So he's, since we stopped this week, he's pulling his stuff out. You know, he'll be back in the spring. I'll have him in the meeting.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
When we present and going forward. At least he's on to us next, next day or ten days on Wakefield and Hager. What about that?
So that's a concern of mine, that one, like, the last, the last thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would have been appropriate to notify us that work was stopped on the site and that he was leaving, so that we weren't expecting daily notifications that we weren't getting. And I think as far as the expectation that we have at this point, when work does resume, is that if you cannot control the mud or the dust, you'll either stop work or you'll be fine. So I don't know if that's how my board feels about it, but that's what I felt we stated last time. And I think that's how we should be moving forward unless you guys object. So I guess the question at this point is, does anyone feel like we should be getting daily reports if there's no work going on?
I don't know about daily reports if there's no work going on, but I don't, and maybe part of it is that I don't understand the nature of this type of work. That could be why I'm really concerned. It's the unknown. What could possibly happen? Let's just assume that the grass is growing and the site is covered, the site, now there's something holding on to the dirt. Aside from a massive flood or something like that, I mean, what, is this something that Doug would be in charge of? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think that, I don't know, Sam, your input as well, but I mean, maybe on a, you know, it seems to me if they've stopped work, we want to check and see if the grass is held. You do that in maybe two weeks. Go back another two weeks and make sure it's still okay. Check with Eric whether or not he's proceeding with his structure. If he's proceeding with his structure, then we need to be there and observe it. Both Joe and probably Sam need to do that. But I think that's going to have to be done administratively, because we really don't know.
And Scott has also said they're going to be out there. They'll be out there after rainfalls and inspecting the site once a week until the freeze.
I'm just curious. Joe, do you have any comments about all this? Joe Sorak is our engineer on site, and I just want to know if you have anything you want to add.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused on the timing.
Okay.
As of last week, it was still an active construction site, following the approved plans, trying to get to that end and see the site. Now we're in a mode, a winter mode, shutting the site down, putting in diversion swales on southern basins. It almost sounds like that's been done already and he's pulled out? Or will it be done?
It's done. Yeah, it's done. They've been, it's in keeping with the overall grading scheme of the site. So they, all the grades are actually pretty close, a lot of them. So it's in keeping with that. We just reinforced it and did things to hold it for the winter.
Does it plan to go along with this?
I didn't draw, I have markups here. I didn't put a full plan yet.
Would they have a plan to go along with this?
And for you to go out and check it out to make sure it is ready and report back to us accordingly.
Yeah. And if he has pulled out, does that mean the equipment is going? If there's an issue during the winter, how do we build a new diversion swale? Will some equipment be left?
There's no equipment. He's going to take his equipment.
He's going to take it. So there's a warm situation, it's a matter of bringing in new equipment and taking care of it.
No, we would appreciate you going out and taking your...
Do you want to, do you want to schedule time to meet together out there?
Sure. Yeah, you have to.
Thanks, Joe.
So I think, do you guys, does my board want to get Joe's reports when he...
I would like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, they'll come to, they'll come, I think, to you. They come to Martha and Martha will distribute them to vote for it.
The stuff from Sam was coming just to me and Martha, so I wasn't sure if everyone else was wanting to see it.
The final wrap-up, you guys suggested.
Have confirmation. Okay.
Sir, before you leave?
She's just getting out of his car.
Okay, great. I guess the question's actually directed. So what if we do get a series of significant storms and all this equipment is now off-site and we have a problem drainage at that site?
Just kind of fix it.
But I guess the question is, the modifications that have been done, to what degree will that affect? What type of storms, a series of storms?
I guess that's the same question I'm having.
No, excuse me, just for a second. It's time for our next public hearing. And I just want to make a notice that it is time, but we're going to be late. And I've acknowledged that the fact that we're a little bit late. And so as soon as we finish this hearing, we'll lead on to you guys. Okay, thank you very much.
So the question is, what's been done, what type of storm will that sustain? Will that sustain three storms in a row?
No, it's more, the way we handle it is, we can, if you bring someone out, when there's a heavy rain event coming in, we send out, needn't last, all our clients are doing environmental monitoring on, giving a heads up at least twenty-four hours ahead of time, you know, if you get some weather coming in in case you missed it, start getting things shored up. After the rain, you know, he's going to be there during the rain events, checking on things. If it's really bad, we'll send, we'll send crews out to go take a look at things during the rain event. And then following it, we go and we take a look at it. What, what level is it designed to? I can't tell you what type of storm. It is more preparing for it. And if we see an event like two weeks ago coming in, we know we got to add more in. We got to, we got to look and really stabilize things and shore that out. These will hold, you know, the way it's great right now, it should be fine for most of your regular, you know, bring it to get in the last week, these smaller storms that are just, they kind of rain all day long. That should hold up. You can see, even now, just from the work, you can see where, where the water's flowing and things are doing what they're supposed to be doing. But yeah, you have to be on, I mean, it's construction, you have to be on top of this on a regular basis. And that's why the oversight over the winter time, when things are shut down, is really important.
So all the equipment's gone, your contractors gone. So who's going to be there like that to address this?
I'll be there. We need to bring in equipment, obviously.
You don't have crews.
Yeah, I have a local guy who can bring in a piece of equipment. It would be Ted Norton, who I've used before. I don't know, probably people know Ted. Yeah, if you know Ted.
Ted's good.
So Ted's good. Ted's done some stuff on there locally. So I can bring Ted in.
Ted's trustworthy.
I need a piece of equipment.
Okay. I'm going to read a couple of things. The first is the, just a summary of the letter that Martha sent to you all. And just, a lot of this has been discussed already, but it was the items based on our, on our trip this past Saturday, this is what we wanted to see tonight, which is obviously the Musco rep and the fifty-foot poles. That hasn't happened, but we've had a discussion about that. Provide a list of restoration plantings originally proposed and a list of what was actually provided with all differences highlighted. We didn't get that. Can you get that done?
Yeah, I do have a list. I do have a list here. Neil McCarthy's been in touch with Doug. He has a sidewalk with Doug on Tuesday.
Okay.
So I know they, from the beginning...
But it's not theirs, it's ours. So if you can get it to Martha, okay?
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. Provide a copy of the original restoration planting plan and a copy of the as-built planting plan with all differences highlighted. Same thing, and have your site contractor, Phil Colosi, at the meeting. He wasn't here. So any of my board members, any more questions before I read some of the communications we've had?
Well, it seemed to me there would still be a report every time Scott checks a report of the plans during the winter. We should get a report and one check, even if it's a negative report, it requires it. Nothing was noted. Just say, I've done the report and nothing was noted. Just send that in every time the report is...
And everything goes to Martha? Okay.
That's very important. Very important.
She got a duck as well. And a slip's going to be done.
Great. Now, there's a letter here from Laura and her husband. And I, it's rather lengthy, and I will try to read all of it, which is what we try to do. But it has mostly to do with lighting, as was her letter of, I think, two weeks ago. Tended Newbury Planning Board and Board of Selectmen, regarding Newbury Golf Center, dear board members, please consider this letter in lieu of our presence at tomorrow's public hearing, which unfortunately we are unable to attend due to previous commitment. As direct abutters of this development, we feel the need to express our continued concern with the proposed lighting at this commercial property being built alongside and in between residences, including our own. We offer the following observations. We recently visited the Leo J. Martin Golf Facility in Weston, Mass. on nine, six, eighteen. We observed the lighting at the driving range between seven PM and eight PM and took several photos. I am attaching those photos to this letter. Mr. Sorensen has repeatedly encouraged the boards to go view the lighting at Leo J., claiming that it is comparable to his proposed lighting. At the last hearing, Mr. Sorensen told the boards that he... At the last hearing, Mr. Sorensen told the boards that he is unable to comply with their request that he arrange a mock-up of this proposed lighting for the boards to view. We believe this is actually more an unwillingness on his part than an inability. As an, as an excuse for his refusal to arrange a mock-up, Mr. Sorensen again told the boards that they can instead simply go view the lights at Leo J. Martin. Once again, Mr. Sorensen has provided misleading information to the boards. The lighting at Leo J. does not contain Musco light fixtures and that's about the only similarity. Actually, it does contain Musco light fixtures and that's the only similarity, I apologize. The otherwise vast differences in the lighting at Leo J. make it useless as a comparison to the proposed lighting at Newbury Golf Center. I am attaching the illumination summary previously submitted to the boards by Mr. Sorensen on 9/17/2017, which was prepared by his lighting subcontractor, Musco Lighting. I am aware that at least John Weiss and Martha Taylor visited Leo Martin a year ago before this project was approved. Mr. Weiss later stated that he found the lights at Leo Martin to be intrusive. I am wondering if Mr. Weiss and Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, were aware at the time of their visit of the following significant differences we observed. A, at Leo J. Martin, there are two 50-foot music light poles located directly behind the tee boxes. Both poles have three lights atop the light pole and one light about 15 feet up the pole. By contrast, for the attached illumination summary, Mr. Sorensen proposed lighting includes three 50-foot poles behind his tee boxes. Will, T1 and T2 will each have five lights atop and one light at 15 feet up. T3 will have six lights atop, one light 15 feet up and one light 25 feet up. So that's a significant number of lights. There is a significant difference in total lumens between having two lights versus having five and six lights atop 50-foot poles. So it is misleading to state that the lights at Leo J. Martin are comparable to the proposed lighting at Newbury Golf. Of note, these three poles, poles T1, T2, and T3, with a total of 20 lights on them, will be located alarmingly close to an abutters home, that is, the Carbones. B, at Leo J. Martin, the light poles located along each side of the fairway are substantially shorter than 50 feet. These lights are affixed to wooden utility poles. A standard utility pole is 40 feet high. These poles have just two lights attached about three-quarters of the way up to the pole at an approximate height of 30 feet. Notably, these two lights at 30 feet heights, height, provided sufficient lighting to allow patrons to view their ball flight. By contrast, the proposed lighting for Newbury Golf includes five 50-foot light poles along the left side of the range, RA1, RA5, two RA5, and four 50-foot poles, RB1 and RB4, along the right side. All nine poles are 50 feet high, all nine poles have four lights atop and one light 15 feet up the pole. Illumination that would be done from these proposed nine, nine light poles would in no way be remotely comparable to the range of lighting that we saw at Leo J. as they would be significantly higher and brighter. C, at Leo J. Martin, there are absolutely no residences located in the near vicinity of the driving range. Therefore, the lighting, even though substantially less bright than the proposed lighting for Newbury Golf, is not harmful or a nuisance for any residential abutters. Additionally, a more distant view of the driving range from the street at the end of the range, after all full darkness revealed, a bright sky glow from the range lighting. By contrast, Mr. Sorensen has inappropriately, inappropriately, callously, and unwisely chosen to cite his Newbury Golf Center in a residential neighborhood directly abutting homes. The proposed lighting will surely cause further direct harm to the abutters' enjoyment of their own homes. I am attaching a copy of a letter written to the boards by Lucas Strom of Lumen Studios Inc. dated 9/6/2017. Mrs. Strom is a lighting expert who was hired by the town to do a peer review. In his letter, Mr. Strom compared the proposed lighting for Newbury Golf to that which an automotive retailer would use. Mrs. Storm, Strom, Mr. Strom further opined in the letter that the proposed lighting is inappropriate and out of scale in a residential neighborhood, could be harmful to abutters, detrimental to property values, and quite possibly in violation of the town bylaws. We agree wholeheartedly with that assessment by your own lighting consultant. We remain very concerned about the possibility that not all board members or town council were made aware of Mr. Strom's opinions prior to approving his project as there is no, there is also a second letter from Mr. Strom on the same date in which these opinions were omitted. Why were Mr. Strom's findings not discussed in the public hearing? Perhaps Mr. Strom should be invited to attend the 10-3 public hearing or a later one unless something is being undisclosed to abutters and their town residents. In closing, our viewing of Leo J. Martin proved totally useless to us as a means of evaluating what the proposed lighting at Newbury Golf would look like. I suspect that Mr. Sorensen is fearful of the board seeing a mock-up of the, of his actual proposed lighting for good reason. A close review of his reasonable, of his reasonable person, of any reasonable person.
A close view of the illumination summary. A close view of an illumination summary.
A close view of the illumination summary combined with an application of common sense should lead any reasonable person to expect that the lighting proposed for the Newbury Golf Center would be extremely harmful and obnoxious to abutters, would be completely inappropriate and out of scale in the residential neighborhood, and also wholly unnecessary and excessive for the operation of a driving range. Additionally, the trees planted so far by Mr. Sorensen as part of his mitigation efforts cannot be expected to block any light emitted from 50-foot poles. The 50-foot-plus-high trees that Mr. Sorensen cut down in his rampant clearing, clearcutting could possibly have provided some relief. Alas, we'll never know. We believe that any nighttime lighting should be disallowed, especially in light of Mr. Sorensen's refusal to do a mock-up. If allowed at all, light fixtures should be restricted to 30 feet in height. No lights were allowed at either Mantle Field or Little League Baseball Field at the Newbury Library for obvious reasons. There are nearby homes. It took an expensive lawsuit before the town was convinced that the harm from lighting in the Little League field, in the Little League field instance. Lighting of the sort proposed at Newbury Golf in this residential setting with pre-existing homes located on three sides of the range is even more egregious. If the board capitulates to Mr. Sorensen and allows lighting to be installed per his proposed plan without mandating a way to evaluate the lighting prior to installation, problems will surely arise that could have been avoided. It would be very costly to have an uninstalled 12 50-foot poles. It seems more prudent to, for all to address avoidable, highly foreseeable problems at this juncture rather than seek remedial measures after a problem has been allowed to occur. We appreciate the board's continued consideration of our concerns. Laura Hanlon and Frank Heeny. So I don't know that we're looking for an answer on that. So I think that we will open it up for any public comment.
Tip Carbone, 123 Scott Road. There's really not much more that I can say, but you all know what my feelings are about the lighting and that is a definite issue. But I just got a text message from a London person that my husband knows and told me to ask for a cut sheet for light fixtures and poles. And apparently that gives all the specifications that will show picture of the light on the light pole, what they're rated. So that's all I know, I need to find out what a cut sheet is or if we can get a popular cut sheet. So lighting is definitely a huge issue for us. I respect all this letter that she wrote. As you all know, the India Bada, that has been about huge issues. We were also told by a lighting expert that you could get a generator on the property and you could also put a pole with that size out for us so that we're able to see what the illumination of the light. So that has been a goal potential for us to, so we've seen them around, maybe not as 50 feet, but we were told by a very reputable lighting company that, so, huge issue for us, as you all know, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, no problem. Anyone else?
Mary Sterling, 31, 10th of August. I'm not at four or 10, we just have a question. Has a lighting study been done, or?
We hired a consultant.
Yeah.
Who gave us information. She alludes to that study and she alludes to the fact that there were different copies of it. The reason that it was different is that in the original one, the lighting consultant was making opinions about real estate values.
Okay.
And we felt that, that was not his expertise. And so we, we focused it on the technical aspects of the lighting that was being put. And it was still a problem. And, but we felt that with proper mitigation, it could be somehow addressed.
I was wondering if you could ask the applicant, the simple initially, the lighting study that will show the impact theories and shade and the actual intensity of the light based on the footprint of the sun. And that is, you know, the seminary code, do you?
That actually has all been submitted as part of the original application that was voted on last fall. Mrs. Carbone, the cut sheets where all of the fixtures are in there as well.
And?
Yeah. Martha, you have those.
They're submitted, they're submitted.
Yeah, they're, they're part of the submitted. And it gives the exact lumens, it gives all the specifications of the lights. We had a lighting expert come in and discuss their theories on how they design it, but they're a very unique and specific type of light that has baffling on the sides and on the top. And the reason they put them higher and they use a more varied number is they can control it better. So if you put the light lower, you lift the baffling up on the side and the front because a lower light is covering the Santa Ana area, so you have to kind of spray the light over a wider area.
I'm pretty familiar with all of that, so.
Okay.
I don't want to waste your time. I want to interrupt you, but I don't want to.
So all of that was brought in and presented as part of the original hearings, let's say last October, maybe, September or October?
Yeah, before the final.
Before.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have a comment? Yes?
I'm not in bother either, but I do have concerns.
Your name, please.
Melissa asked for a 3,000 way. I do have concerns about the lighting factor and that there are residential areas around it. And the report by Mr. Strom, you know, did you care? I mean, did you take that into consideration when you were making your?
Yes, we did. We did.
I did have one other question too. I was wondering if more trees were taken down than what the board had approved in the original.
Yes, that's the reason we're still here.
Because that was very upsetting to me as well. But I, this is my first time, so I just wanted to go on record saying that I found that's really just.
So, just so you know, there were roughly 133 additional trees. And so this part of the year has to do with the mitigation. And there have been 133 new trees we planted on the site and replacement of the trees that were taken.
And how far?
So we have horticulturists and arborists and landscaping engineers and what they've done is they've designed trees to give them the best chance to survive. So they've brought in smaller trees to adequately space them, pick the locations properly to plant them. And we're working with the board, there's going to be a, like, survival guarantee of the trees that has to be put into place to ensure.
I didn't, I didn't get that in the discussion, so I don't want to take up too much time either. It just, I wasn't clear on that, so.
But in the end, the reason why we have substantial concern with the landscaping plan is to address the issue of the lighting and to, to the greatest extent possible to mitigate the impact that the lighting might have on the abutting properties. Any more comment?
The letter refers to a lawsuit on the Bifire Little League for light pollution that is incorrect. Lawsuit was for violation of deed restriction. I was sitting in the seat at that time deeply impressed.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Perry.
Brian, can you help us out here to what we want to do next? Do we just kind of set a, set a, set a date?
That would be one thing, but let me bring it back to what we discussed a little bit earlier, which was incorporating that letter.
Mm-hmm.
So it becomes.
So it's a question for that.
So I have drafted a, for your consideration. I know this is a board often requests one, so I took the liberty. And again, the intent of that, although there may be, as was noted, other enforcement mechanisms that are overlapping, obviously this is a concern that's important for the board to have an equal.
All right. I move that the dates, deadlines, and permissions set forth in the board's 6/26/18 vote are stayed with the expectation, exception of the condition 19, voted 8/29/18, and 20, voted 9/11/18. The applicant shall hereafter adhere to and comply with the terms and conditions of the 9/19/18 letter from Warren Cameron Group, updated 10/3/18, until further review and consideration of the board.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Second. Should we discuss it first, then you guys do it? Discussion?
How about, not enforcement, but reports? Do you want to put that in here too, that we require five weekly or?
Let's see if it's included.
Well, there is an element to Scott's letter about checking.
I'm talking about reporting that to them.
Yeah, I think we could do that secondarily after this, if that's comfortable to you guys.
Let's check to see if we have that already.
I should think, Judge Payman, you can include that in the original motion.
Just add, what, what were your words?
Well, let me tell you what my concern is. My concern is that there's not, we're not going to get adequate feedback. We're not going to, we're not going to see this, this hasn't happened before, I think, again, it's February.
So how frequently would you like to get information?
Well, I would like, what's, what is our, what are we updated, what have we decided to do with Joe?
Well, Joe, after, after this, we'll probably not be doing that much work after.
I think he's going to be meeting Scott.
Right. But that's like a one or two time thing, but.
What about when Mr. Cameron has said that he's going to go out at any weather event? Anytime Mr. Cameron goes out and makes an inspection, that report comes to.
That, I like that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I would like a report along.
We have to do the superboards. We're not to do.
But they're not getting, are the superboards getting done now?
They're starting.
Well, we just, we just got them. They, they had a transfer of their engineering group.
There was a gap.
Quick question. Feedback, is that supposed to be to Martha and the planning board, to the select board, to all of the above? Makes a big difference.
I think it's all because the planning board would be the one to issue any further fines or anything of the sort, not the board or selectmen.
None of the same.
Gets that, right. So. So I think it comes to both boards. And then come that, Martha, we're out of both boards, we'd get to Sam and if there's anything policing that has to be done, that's how we handle it.
So I think, I think my point is that I want to make it clear to all parties what is expected. I don't want to do this understanding, I don't want them to misunderstand what I want and I don't want them to understand what they're going to provide what.
And also, I think it's important, a negative report is a report.
That's right.
So if you go out there and there's nothing wrong and everything's peachy keen, that's great. Tell them, I was there on X date and everything was peachy keen and at least then everybody's comfy. And then we don't have to rely on poor Sam saying, I didn't get a report on that day and I didn't get a report on that day because there was no report.
Yeah. If I could clarify this, because this is all spelled out in the EPA Destruction General Permit, which was just updated. So the, the inspections are reporting, there's, there's several different layers and mechanisms, but in this case, we are doing weekly inspections, so once every seven days or after every rain event that exceeds a quarter inch rainfall. And those inspection reports are not positive, negative, they're reporting. So we're going through all the erosion control measures, everything on the site and we're reporting, okay, this is, this is installed, this is fine, this is installed, this is fine, this is installed, this needs some maintenance, this is installed, this needs to, you need, or this isn't there, we noticed there needs to be a corrective action that takes place to put something there. So it's a real time, and I'm using the EPA terms when I say corrective action, it sounds scary, but that's just how they term it in the forms. So we're going through different layers and yeah, we're, we're doing those, we can copy you on the reports. We typically do them on Thursdays, allowing, you know, one more business day to do any work, get that fixed up before weekend, but, you know, maintenance might change that.
So this is me, what you might need. And the applicant shall report to the planning board. And the applicant shall report to the planning board and the board of selectmen at least once a month on the progress, at least once a month? Or is it?
Or after every rain event.
Or, or after every rain. Want to add that in there?
Yeah.
John, I think, and correct me, and Sam, it would be a lot clearer, and it's not Scott's fault, everything's compressed. And I think, and I can't speak for Alicia, but it might be bothering me a little bit. You know, if there's some mechanical damage on the site, so be it. If we have snow and big rain from the spring and it comes out across the road, that's not good. If we have four feet of silt and sediment that's moved into the wetlands, that's not particularly advantageous either. So what's hard, I think, for at least me and maybe Alicia, when she's asking for these reports, but we actually haven't noted or seen how substantial the mitigations are to protect the wetlands and protect any burst down under the roads. So that's where we're at a little loss, because I think at least for me, mechanical damage within the site itself, you guys had to clean that up in the spring. But you really don't want to pack the wetlands with a bunch of soil, and you don't want it to start to come out over the road.
Yeah.
So I hope you guys, you haven't showed us on a plan, I hope what you did before everyone left is suitable to solve those problems.
Yeah, the big issue that, that ran out of the gate, there was no control, there was limited controls because everything was moving and flexing, so we got those controls. My, my big, my big theme was, we got to detain water in the site and hold it, you got to try to hold it. There's many pockets, I don't care if it's a small pub, just try to hold it on site, slow release. The goal is to prevent it from getting passed, but that's where, you know, if there, if there is something, you know, you're in that big storm bed and the, you know, a silt bed fell over, you know, we had four inches of rain in about an hour and a half. Put the silt beds back up, raped up the, the silt that got past that, restored it, you know, you repair it, that's a corrective action, you fix it. And yeah, the goal is to minimize all those, any, any, any issues where it gets past the sediment controls and there's a discharge. And if I could make maybe a suggestion for the condition, just so there's no possible competition with the EPA and DEP regulations that are already governing what we're doing, maybe just keep it as simple as reporting in accordance with the solar pollution plan, which, which follows EPA criteria.
Sorry, John.
So, and the applicant shall provide copies of.
Joe, how do you feel about that?
Copies of, yeah.
Another thing?
Shall provide copies of.
All reports.
All reports.
Prepared and submitted.
To Doug, and then we'll copy Martha.
And in accordance with.
Store pollution intervention plan.
That's correct.
SWIP.
Okay.
Sound good? That's fine?
Sam? In accordance with federal EPA and. And SWIP, or, or just, or just state DEP?
DEP.
Right. Okay. So added, you want to read that, just add that, and then I'll, I'll read it forward.
And the applicant shall provide copies of all reports prepared and submitted in accordance with federal EPA and state DEP.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Motion, Josh, or the other?
Second.
Is there further discussion from that board?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is to the planning board. I move that the dates, deadlines, and permissions set forth in the board's June 26/18 vote are stayed with the exception of conditions 19 voted on 8/29/18 and 20 voted 9/11/18, and that the applicant shall hereafter adhere to and comply with the terms and conditions of the 9/19/18 updated 10/3/18 letter from Moran Cameron Group with further review inconsistencies of the board, and the applicant shall provide all reports prepared and submitted in accordance with federal EPA and state DEP regulations.
You think it is?
Not so well. Second, any comment on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So I think what we were thinking about a meeting in February, I think that the board of selectmen meets on the 12th.
Yes.
Does that make sense to everybody?
So if I get a motion to continue the public hearing to February 12th, so moved. Thank you. Second. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Just bring your site guy.
Aye.
We have to do it, too. And then a, a motion to continue the public hearing for the golf center to February 12th, 2019, at what do we, do we have a time?
Seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen?
Moving.
So moved, any discussion? All those in favor?
Second.
He did, I thought he did. No, he did, too.
He moved second.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Need a motion for a motion. Yes, so moved.
We did check, Alan, we don't have anything, right, for sure that bar we have?
Is there a second to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for second.
Jeff, second.
Jeff, second.
All right, we'll take two seconds, just while we let the other group that's been waiting come on in.
Thank you. Enjoy your work.
Hey, thanks, Sam, for being here.
I'm sitting.
No, those are things I can't work with myself. I wasn't here last time. I'm going to get to work though. I made, I made a mess of myself. I bet.
Yeah, we're just going to open our mouth.
We just think your choice is speech. George.
Thank you. Thank you, sorry. All right, again, we're sorry for the delay, I think this is the second time we've done this to you guys, right?
Maybe this should go first.
But it gives you, I know, it gives you time to.
Gives us time to get.
Whatever. So this is the continued public hearing, special permit application, dog daycare, training and play groups, 35 Downfall Road map, R41 lot 60, applicant Jennifer Ford, Sea Coast K9. So we have been at this for at least three sessions, and so at our last session, I know that we said that we had some difficulty coming to conclusion on it because there was some discrepancies between the operations of the existing facility and what was being asked for it. So we had some time, and I know that our building inspector has gone out and spoken with Jenny and, and a couple of things. So I guess I'll open up to you guys and say, do you have anything more that you want to add at this point in time, or just summarize where you are? And so be helpful for everyone, okay?
Sure.
Thanks, Tim.
I don't want to. So I guess in summary.
And your name and address, I'm sorry.
Jennifer Ford, 35 Downfall Road. I guess since last time, having spoken to Sam, I did explain our current operations and his feedback to me was that we are still currently in a home occupied, you know, situation. And pending the permit, obviously, that would change the number of employees on site. That was sort of where we had left things. But at least for me, having obviously heard the feedback about traffic and the concern about weekend traffic, especially, I think for, for us moving forward, I'd like to drop the idea of weekend traffic. It sounds like, you know, obviously in a residential area, that is a concern, I understand that. And so for us, our Monday through Friday program being the same, from nine to three, having four employees available to be on site, and then obviously, Dory and I being residents as well. So I think that might be sufficient for us to continue to grow without having to move everything off-site immediately, but would obviously be respectful to the people in the area who want to use our road on Saturdays.
So, so that would eliminate 36 trips on the weekend.
It would, so it overall, I mean, drastically reduced what we even do right now, but would still, you know, would still contain everything between the hours of nine and three for us.
So what are you either counting now or projecting, I realize this is fast that you've done this, but what would be then the, because I, I think it kind of hinges on the number of trips.
Right.
And so what would be the number of trips during the week now? I mean, what, what number would that be?
I guess off the top of my head, it's about four employees coming and then leaving in addition to us, so six, 12 a day.
So 12, so, so the total trips.
Yeah.
For five days is 48. Is that right?
Sixty. Yes.
Yeah.
My calculator.
I went to Catholic school.
Is that down from 120?
Approximately 120, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so the total trips goes from 120 today to 60 that you're proposing total, and there's no weekend traffic?
Right, and the traffic would all be employee traffic.
Employees would be, bringing the dogs and taking the dogs.
Right, and the employees sign a code of conduct, so they are the ones that we're most able to control in terms of any issues with driving.
And so there wouldn't be any patrons picking up dogs or dropping off dogs at all?
Correct, yeah. And we have access to weekend space off-site, so we'll just continue renting for the Saturday and Sunday.
And what would be the total number of dogs? Do you, do you know what that would be right now?
Forty is the kennel license.
Does the kennel license?
Yeah, and that would become our.
You don't have that now, though.
We have 30 is our current kennel license.
Board members, any other questions on this? This is substantial change.
Weekend concerns are resolved because the traffic is reduced by 4%.
George?
That's a good result.
Yes. Martha, do you have anything you want to contribute on this?
Yeah, I think so, it does.
So I'm going to open this.
Yes.
So I think I'm going to open up to comment from the community, any neighborhood resident would like to say something. We'd like to hear from you now. Over here.
The gas company, Johnson Marine. How do the dogs get there when they come to? Do you have 30 dogs?
So part of our proposal and part of what we do currently with our business is that the employees pick up the dogs from their homes, bring them to the site, they stay for the duration of the play, and then they're driven off by employees.
And each employee just does one trip and one trip?
Correct. And part of the amended proposal, actually, the second meeting, is that if it ever reaches a capacity that we wouldn't be able to get them in one trip, I would just purchase a business vehicle for those employees.
Yep.
Yes.
Tom Rogers, 15 Church Street. So the vehicles that you're using, are those automobiles or trucks or vans or?
It's just our employees' personal vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
One a day, two Johnson Marine. So if you currently have four vehicles and 30 dogs, you're saying you're taking about seven dogs, eight dogs at a time each trip? And do your employees have that type of vehicle that can house that many dogs each trip?
So we're not at capacity right now.
No, but you said your capacity was 40 and that you have 30 currently and four employees.
No, our, our kennel license is for 30. That means that's most dogs we could have are current. What we currently do is about 20.
I misheard that. It's 40 and 30.
So our kennel license would essentially say, this is the maximum number of dogs we could have at the property at any given time.
Right, and that's not 40.
Not that we have 40 clients whose dogs come on a daily basis. So right now, we do about 20. The goal for us would be 40 being the maximum minus our own dogs, so I would say 35 be the maximum.
So let me just follow up on your question. So, so if, if, if you want to go from 20 to 40.
Yeah.
Can you still do that with 60 trips a week?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Can I just get the question?
Yes, go back.
About the employees' cars and pool, then possibly 10 dogs, well, to allow for the one trip each employee per day?
So if we maximized our kennel license, which would be 35 dogs, there are six people who can pick up and drop off dogs in their vehicles.
So that's six dogs per vehicle, then roughly?
Approximately.
Can you fit that?
Okay. I can fit nine in my car.
And they all get along? Joanne Hogan, Downfall Road. I'm still hung up on the whole thing of whether there should be a business on this narrow residential dead-end street. Okay, somebody led Ms. Ford to believe that it was okay to have a business down there. And I don't think it is okay. Now, after the last meeting that I was at, I sent an email to the planning board about what if I decided to sell jewelry at my house, because I do that, I make jewelry for fun. And what if I were going to start selling jewelry? And I was told that, well, you can't, the stipulation is you can't sell a product from your home, but apparently you can sell a service from your home. Now, my other issue is that dog training has, is got to be kind of seasonal, because I don't imagine 40 dogs are going to fit in the house, or in the basement, for you to train these dogs and, and their owners. So I can, I, I want to know if anybody's asking what's going to happen in the future? Is there going to be a large building that's going to go up to an, in order to do dog training, much like what, Muddy Creek, I don't know what they're called now, but down in Topp's Field on 97? A large, wide main road. So I would envision that you'd have to build a building. And most places that do dog training do sell products, leashes, collars, different things. I could envision this getting into different items being for sale. So if that could happen there, why can't I sell jewelry? Do you know what I'm saying? So we could actually have on the street many people selling different things. And if, if I was selling jewelry, we'd probably have two or three people come at a time, not 40 dogs. You know, so I think that the biggest issue is really, is it, is it legal, is it advisable for a large business to start to be held on a down, on a dead-end, narrow residential road? I think that's the issue. I don't think the issue is how many dogs, I mean, I can't imagine nine dogs in one car, to tell you the truth. I think usually, you know, you can see what could happen there. I will say that people who are, are traveling, for the most part, appear to be respecting a limit, a, a speed limit. But I think the issue really is not how many dogs are there. The issue is, there should not be a business on Downfall Road, a dead-end, narrow street that's residential and has been residential from day one. And I think that it's important to bear that in mind. I, I, that's the issue to me. And to have, to gradually get to weekend business is really an insult to the neighborhood. Because as far as the weekend goes, I would like a quiet neighborhood with peacefulness. And if there are going to eventually be 40. And if there are going to eventually be forty or fifty cars going down the road, I can imagine tacks on the road. It's just, you know, it's just, it's insulting to us as neighbors to have a major business at the end of a dead-end street.
Okay.
My name is Gary Stover at Fort Johnson Lane. My concern is that Downfall's such a narrow street. My wife just relayed a story to me today that she was driving down the street, and there's two women walking, and so she had to pull over to the side, and another car's coming the other way, and there just wasn't enough room. She had to pull over to the side, and another car is coming thereafter. But it's just a very, very narrow street. I just think it's very dangerous to have that much traffic on such a narrow road. And the other point I have is a residential neighborhood, I don't think we should have a business in a residential neighborhood, especially in such a secluded neighborhood down a narrow street. I'm very much opposed to it.
Okay.
Can I just comment that we are not the only business on the road, just for record? Are there other like businesses on that, on the road?
Any pony barn, anyone?
I can't, we can't hear.
Stand up.
Ben Time in Council for, I'm Jenny Fort. So with regard, Mrs. Hogan, to your comments on weekends, I think you heard Jenny say that she's removing the weekend part of the proposal. So if the board has declined to grant the special permit, it is only going to allow her to expand in the manner that she is asking to do for weekdays, not weekends. On your concern about retail, the board, again, if they approve this, are going to be putting in the special permit, the sixty weekly trips that have been discussed. Those sixty trips, as Jenny has testified, are going to be taken up by the twelve trips per weekday by her employees to deliver the animals to the site, and for four of the employees, rather than two currently, to be able to stay on the site. That's why the traffic is going to be cut in half during the week based on what is occurring now and based on what Jenny has a right to do under the home occupation part of the bylaw, which does allow home occupations as of right. And so there'll be no allowance and no room for any kind of retail expansion, nor is that something that Jenny has any intention of doing. And, you know, with regard to overall traffic, you know, again, it's going to be a reduction from what's currently allowed. In looking at the bylaws, and I know one of the things that the board looks at are what are the other kinds of things that are allowed as of right in this district? Those include things like daycare centers. Anybody living on Downfall Road, Johnson Lane, or Lenway can open up a daycare center, which would generate, as of right, they wouldn't need any kind of special permit, and that would generate a lot more traffic than what Jenny's generating. People can run a farm stand by right under the bylaws. That, again, would generate retail traffic. That's allowed as of right in the residential agricultural district. It's right there in the bylaws. So those are all things that could generate a lot more traffic than what we're talking about. And as has been pointed out, there are, my understanding is that there are other businesses that operate on Downfall Road, including a summer camp for children and horses. So surely that generates some traffic as well. The special permit rules under the bylaw allow for animal daycare, and so that's obviously why we're here. The board, you know, can, and we hope will, grant a special permit for animal daycare with the various restrictions that we've been talking about. So all of that is in the bylaw and are things that are fully within the scope of what the town allows with oversight by the board.
But I would think that the size of the road...
Identify yourself again.
Joanne Hogan, Downfall Road, number nine. The size of the road, the narrowness of the road should dictate something as far as these laws or bylaws or whate'er goes. If I were to put a farm stand at the end of my driveway, there would be no room for anybody to come to get anything, because the road is narrow. You need to use some common sense here. And the neighborhood, you know, I don't envision anybody opening up a business other than, at all actually, that's going to have that amount of traffic. If I'm going to have a daycare center, at my age, I can't even imagine that. But it would, you know, it would make no sense. It would have to be out in the backyard. It would have, you know, it's a residential street. It's not, it's not Main Street. It's not even as wide as Grove Street. It's a very narrow road, and I think that needs to have some influence on the bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda Cannon, I'm at Thirty-two Downfall Road. I do have three very small children, and we are right past the hill and right before the driveway. I have three children, they live with me a hundred percent of the year, and my kids are very active. We play soccer, they're out on the road all the time with their bikes. We don't just have school year, my kids are out there all summer long, between nine and three, at those exact times. What kid doesn't want to be outside at three o'clock playing? My kids know that they have to stay to the side of the road, they know to be careful, they go through Robinson's to their friend Grace's house. They're able to do that. We can almost see from one area to the other. And all of the residents, we take pride in our street and that it is a children's neighborhood, it is a family neighborhood, that we drive slow. We know that there are the kids playing on the road. My kids walk to the bus stop, they walk home from the bus stop. I follow them in my car to the bus stop, but just today, there was a car that almost hit Grace as she's walking to the bus stop. Not saying I don't know, I know that they drove past my house, because I'm where I passed them. We have to pull all the way to the side of the road. My kids, as they drive, walk to the bus stop, walk home. There's half dates, there's different times of the school year that kids are in the area. We live in this area because it is such a small residential area to raise a family, to be able to have them not worry about where they're walking to, and they can go up to Mr. Robinson's house and stay there, hang out there, and not have to worry about that hill. I have a four-year-old who rides a bike. Granted, I'm with her, but you cannot see her over that hill. And for us to have, we know to drive slow, and I'm not saying that, who's out there monitoring if your employees are driving? The code of conduct, because they say that they're going to drive the speed limit? Well, guess what, I'm running late, I might go a little bit over the skip. Like, those things are things to take account of, and I have kids that it's, we never expected to be in an industrial area where we have businesses on the street. And again, just today, again, I'm not sure if you have an employee that has a CRV, silver CRV? Okay, so yeah, again, see, we have this issue with just people, and those are people that live in the area, no matter people that don't live in the area. And throughout the summer, my kids are outside every day, playing in the driveway, a ball runs out into the road. Those are accidents that happen, but having the increased traffic even between Monday through Friday, kids are still in the area. It doesn't resolve that issue.
We had an incident today where this young lady, I believe, and her mother were walking up Downfall, and I believe that same vehicle, they had to jump to the side.
You're referring to silver CRV?
Who was it? I don't know. What color was the van?
It was a dark gray.
Dark gray.
Sorry.
But that's another issue. We don't know who it is, we don't write our license plates, but it's not a neighborhood car, okay? We know that. However, I do want to point out, maybe it was just a bit too absurd, every day, there are nine kids in this neighborhood, from this size to this size, going up to the old school to get the boss to come home. They've been doing this for generations, not the same nine. They've been doing this for generations. We see and have a concern that this is going to have to change. Somebody's going to have to drive them up and bring them home. You can't let the little ones and such go on their own, where they have in the past. So there's a little bit of a family attachment here, sure, because it's a family neighborhood, that's what it really is. Nine kids, right now, every day, two trips, two in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, Becky Mountain, I live over at Nine Larkin Road, and I am a client of Seacoast Hailing. And I have lived in Byfield my whole life, and I am very sympathetic to all of you. I don't know how many of you hang out on Larkin Road at all, but it is also a very narrow street, and is now a dead-end street, because there is a bridge that's out to Georgetown, I'm sure you're all aware of. So I know how it feels to be on a street where you have to jump off to the side every time a car comes, if you're walking your dog, or if you're driving down there. And I also know what it's like to have a lot more traffic on that street than there was when you were a kid. There are a lot more houses down there now than there were. When I was there, there's a subdivision that may or may not go in down there, which is terrifying for those of us living up near the end. But it's not because there's a new business there, that's, I mean, as you just found out, there were two cars there today that were not a result of that business. That's kind of just what's been happening in Newbury lately. There's a lot of new people, there's a lot of new things going on. But I would just like to say that without Jenny and Dory and everything that they do, my little pup would not have a safe place to go when I travel, which I do for work a lot, and when I go places for school, I would not have very loving and caring people that he runs out the door to go see instead of running away in fear, shaking, running into my arms like he used to at the place I used to take him. When I tell him Aunt Jenny's coming to pick him up, he is thrilled, he is so excited. And so, I mean, I know she's speaking to you guys, but I really want to speak to you, because I understand your concerns, I really do, and they're very, very valid. But please know that they are really good people, and when they say that there will not be a ton, there will not be a lot more cars on your road, what she is telling you is the truth. She is a very honest person, I have known her since I was five years old. So please believe her when she tells you that she is going to do the best she can to do right by you, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the back. Oh, wait, wait, refer to Avery.
Either one.
No, because you haven't been heard yet.
Avery Woodworth, thank you. First thing, business, the Painty Pony Barn is no longer. And that was a four-to-five-week summer program for four or five kids. It's now defunct, it will not be resurrected, so that's a moot point. Secondly, I know Newbury's changing, yes, there's more traffic, I'm sorry, there are more houses on Larkin, they really, that road really can't take it, you guys all need to get together to stop that, because that almost happened at the end of Downfall Road also. Somebody wanted to build eighteen houses down there, and that was stopped. The traffic has increased markedly since Jenny and her gang moved in at the end of the street and started having dogs. Forget the special permit, forget all that, the traffic has jumped, the thirty to forty to sixty trips, the numbers keep changing as soon as they started doing that, then moving in down there. You say that she has, by right, the ability to do business. There is no real definition of the volume of that business, the amount of traffic allowed by that business, it's not in there. There is no specific list of what by right home business means. I would argue that she is going against the spirit of the law, because a home business, again, is generally somebody at home doing architecture, doing art, making jewelry, going to craft fairs, things like that. It's not traffic coming into the neighborhood and changing all of our lives. If you look at how the neighborhood has been, houses do not turn over in our neighborhood very much, and they don't turn over for a reason. One of the reasons is, it's a great neighborhood, it's not a business corridor. It is a tiny little area where everybody's out doing things. People are walking, people are playing street hockey, people are riding bikes, people used to ride horses down the street, not just my wife, but other people. So it's just not a suitable area. And I understand, and your character is not what's in question here. I understand you do a great job with dogs. That's awesome, because there is a need for that, but not in our neighborhood at our expense to our lifestyle. You're asking us to modify our behavior where we put down our roots a long time ago for your benefit and for some other people who are not in our neighborhood? That's not good for us. The other thing is, you said, there are two of you that live there who are employees, and then you get two more employees, that's four. How do we keep coming with six?
What we're asking for is for four non-resident employees instead of two.
And what are you running out?
Two.
Only two.
Two non-resident employees.
Okay, and is this business registered and licensed already, as it exists?
Since 2012.
It is? And you have a business license or a certificate?
Not with me.
I mean, you have one, though.
Yeah, we pay taxes, we have liability insurance.
Well, I understand you pay, that's, yeah. Okay, good. I think that's about all I have to say, except is it in fact true not to be a doubt in Thomas that somebody could have a farm stand? Is that in a...
It's residential agricultural.
That might be from Main Street.
It might be from Main Street.
I mean, it works better on Scotland Road, but you can have it. In the backs.
Hi, I'm Norine Waddell, Two Lenway Road. I moved into the neighborhood in 2005, and I have a very small dog that I'm out with every two to three hours, walking around, and, or more, okay. And I'm constantly telling people to slow down on Downfall Road, constantly. And it's not people that live in the neighborhood. I know everyone in the neighborhood, because I walk my dog all over the place. So, and it's been like that for a year, constantly, it's just slow down, slow down, they zip up and down the street. So I don't know how Jenny's going to, you know, have this code of conduct and say her employees aren't going to speed up and down the street. I'm out there every day telling people to slow down, every day.
And these aren't employees that are you're telling?
They're not people in the neighborhood.
Can you describe the vehicles and the people?
No, I don't want to pay attention, but they're not, they're not people that live in the neighborhood.
It's part of the proposal, BA.
You don't, you don't need to, we just take your questions.
Yeah, and that, that's it.
Someone else? Yes, in the, oh, right here.
Joey Staya, Eight Johnson Lane. If you were to approve a permit, I assume there's restrictions or something on it? Now, do the restrictions say how many dogs she can have, or would it say how many cars could go to her business daily? I mean, I think, because if you, if she says that, okay, now we have seven dogs in a car, but if you're just limiting the number of dogs, eventually more cars could take instead of maybe two dogs, you know, instead of seven, which would increase the traffic. I don't know what you're looking at for restrictions, but I think a big concern is the number of cars going down, and that I think should be kind of put in there.
Right, thank you. Yes?
Alice McGonagall, One Johnson Lane. I just have a question. Is there a legal number of dogs you can have in a car? And I ask that because when she first moved into the neighborhood, I popped in to introduce myself, and a car came in with these dogs. And I was actually horrified to see that there was like six, seven dogs in this car, and what's not in a large car? A, I would think it'd be dangerous to the driver if something, you know, the dogs start to fight or something. I don't know if dogs have to be restrained in cars, I just question that.
I don't have an answer to that. Do you?
We do, part of our liability insurance has restrictions, and so we follow their guidelines, but... Because dogs are all restrained in the vehicle, and they're evaluated first. So we never had an issue with dogs being aggressive in the car, because we don't take aggressive dogs.
Other, other questions, please? Yes, in the corner.
One a day, Two Johnson Lane again. I just want to reiterate one aspect, is that none of the gentlemen tried to build some homes up on that property, and it didn't pass. And part of the reason was the zoning law, and I could be wrong this day, because this was something I developed, but the road had to have forty feet, be forty feet wide, all the way down, which is not, which is... the way down, which is not, which is why it is so difficult now for two cars to simply pass one another. And that's on a normal day, never mind with the snow on the ground and snowbank and so forth, which makes it even more difficult for our children. I live right on the corner of Downfall and Johnson and my four grandchildren I take care of, they're seven, six, and two or three, three years old, and they're running out all the time. So I do, I do hope the board takes into account very seriously the, the danger that exists and why the people of the neighborhood are so strongly not convinced that this would work, that there wouldn't be too much traffic on that street because they can't handle it anymore anyway. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sternman?
Welcome, Sternman. Thirty-one Downfall. So I guess what I would add to the conversation is, we as a community have to pick our poison. I think the poison comes like this. There's nothing stopping the farm stand, there's nothing stopping the guy coming in trying to do a 40P on that property. When we sold the property with the previous owner from Jenny, we made sure they had a livestock interest and they, I think, approached this board about finding a horse boarding business if I'm not correct. I don't know if that ever came to fruition, but that was their goal. And they in turn sold to Jenny, who was doing again an agricultural home business. And then I guess I would get to the, to the net differential of the conversation. Every one of us who lives on Downfall Road leaves our houses and goes to work. Now Jenny has three people who live at that house. So we're talking about people driving out and coming back. Even if they didn't have their dog business, okay, three of those people are going to work every day. Okay, so the net differential we're talking about are three cars and six trips a day. Whether we do away with the dog business or not, I would much rather have a three-car differential on that road than a farm stand, which I didn't know I could open a farm stand. I would just think long and hard about the poison we're gonna pick to have in our neighborhood. And keep in mind that three cars are a lot less than a farm stand or some of the other businesses that were mentioned here. I know none of us like change. I'm the grumpiest person in the world. Most of the people who live on Downfall Road never met me. I've owned property there since 2009, okay? And I will tell you this, okay? It's a great neighborhood, you know, nice street. The road was designed for a certain amount of traffic, okay? And a traffic engineer can tell you what it is. You drive around any town in this state and I will tell you the roads to me look narrow, but when you do the engineered calculation on the road, I will assure you that Downfall Road is designed and can accommodate three more cars a day. And that's my two cents for that.
Okay.
He doesn't even live there.
Yes, on the record, I'm not sure if it was ever previously, the width of Downfall at that road is fifteen feet, seven inches.
Right, we've got that in, it expands like to seventeen in certain locations, probably at the beginning, and probably down at the end, is my guess.
Correct. So people, you're not passing each other safely, particularly for people walking. It's not the whole road.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Avery?
Most of the talk, too, has been talked of growing your business, which is awesome. That's what every business wants to do. But I'm not sure how that also fits in with our neighborhood. How do you go from, we're already worried about what you're doing now and you want to grow your business even more. What's the tipping point that you're gonna say, okay, I've grown my business so much that now I have to go offsite and I'm gonna buy a piece of land in the industrial park or I'm gonna buy a piece of land on Route One or a more suitable location so I can have five hundred or a thousand customers, which you probably could because the need is obviously there. And I would also like to argue that not everybody who lives Downfall Road goes to work. There are lots of people who stay home.
I just, I think it's a good question because it does, I guess it's not very straightforward because for us, the special permit means we can have more dogs and more employees on site, which increases our revenue, but the number of traffic trips goes down. So it is a little bit of a flip flop and I guess might be a little confusing if, you know, you haven't been here for each consecutive meeting where we've been explaining that. But essentially forty dogs, I think we talked about last time, that is the number, you know, for us thirty-five, that we would generate enough revenue to afford an offsite location. I live there, I don't want more than forty dogs at my house from, and it's four hours a day, but still more than I would want at my residence. So we do have a plan for eventually moving, you know, services offsite. Our classes, our training classes are currently offsite, but being a small business, we don't generate the revenue to afford something a new report right now. So this was sort of our compromise, instead of having our employees come and go in twos, they'll come and stay, reduce the number of total trips per traffic. And I think in the four meetings that we've had, we haven't had any complaints in terms of the dogs. So the increase in dogs is for us, the decrease in traffic is for the community.
Yes?
Kathy Cashton, Lenway Road. Just have a question. If this permit is permitted and this is, becomes a business, then that property is no longer considered a residential property, so if the time came that Jenny was gonna sell...
It's a residential property that has a special permit to conduct this business.
Stays residential.
Stays residential. Yes?
And the permit goes with the business, is that correct? So if she leaves the permit...
Well, we can do it either way.
It doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to.
Okay.
We can say it stays only with the business, with, with this applicant.
Okay.
Okay? Or expires, whatever. Okay? All right, board members?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I've spent all that time to get something to say.
Get up.
George Blahos, twelve Johnson Lane, we've been living there for fifty years.
Not enough.
One of the things that attracted us was the nature of that neighborhood, which is very, very residential, as far as I know. I think here tonight, I thought I heard someone say something about already conducting a business of some type from their homes, maybe not very big ones. And frankly, one of my favorite walks, I'm eighty-seven years old, and one of my favorite walks is down Downfall. And one of them is because there's nobody else doing it down there most of the time. There are some people that come from other parts of town that I don't recognize, but most of us recognize each other. And the width of that road is, as has been stated here earlier tonight, it should be a very prime consideration in your decision about whether or not to allow the increase of traffic on that road. It's just not designed, built, remember that was just a road going up, the two hundred acre farm that went across Route ninety-five. We happen to own a house where the farmer lived that did that. And that whole thing has changed, but the fact that that is a dead end road, I'd love to walk down the end to the telephone pole or into the turnaround, walk back up, go back down Lenway and then back home. It checked about the right length for that half hour, twenty minutes or half hour walk you're supposed to do each day to be old. And I, I just feel the whole nature of the neighborhood would be totally different. We're probably gonna have to sell our house before too long, most people do when they get to be my age. And I'm very concerned about anyone considering buying it, coming into the neighborhood and seeing a lot of traffic on roads that were never designed to handle it. So I'm concerned about that. It's dollars and cents and at my age and in my financial situation, it's very important that the neighborhood stayed the way that it has been for a very long time. Thank you.
Mr. Blahos reminded me that our, Downfall Road has always been used as a walkway for people from other parts of town because it is a dead end street and safe. I actually have noticed in the last couple of months that I don't see as many people coming down Downfall Road as used to. And I end up having to ask myself, is it because they don't find it safe anymore? Because there used to be lots of people walking, now it's basically those of us who live there. But there used to be a lot of people walking from Grove Street, I know a couple of friends who would come and walk, and then even down from Main Street. And that has decreased in the last couple of months. So I just add that to the mix.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's it? Okay. I was gonna get comments first and then read letters, is that right? No?
How about just summarizing what the, what the change with this permit is doing?
I think we should do that then. All right, let's do this then, let's read the letters and then I'll summarize.
Three letters from the record. The first will be from Joanna Hogan, dated August thirtieth. Good morning, last night I attended the planning board meeting regarding the issue of the dog daycare business at the end of Downfall Road. I find myself a little confused upon hearing the description of the quote special permit guidelines. I believe that was stated that there should be no detrimental, no detriment to the surrounding neighborhood or something of that nature. I also heard Avery Woodworth state permitines, wife have, are with the stipulation that there be no customers coming into their homes to buy products made there. Please help me understand how this is, how it is okay for a dog care business that in no way benefits the people living in this narrow dead end residential road to do business, yet it is not allowed for a long-term resident to sell how many products from her home? There seems to be different interpretations of quote special permit guidelines. Let me put it another way, for instance, I have jewelry, I make jewelry as a hobby. If I decided to go great guns and make jewelry for sale, would I be able to, if people come to my house to view and purchase my jewelry? In that scenario, there certainly wouldn't be twenty to forty cars lining up to check out my wares and my neighbors might even be interested in checking out what I have made. If the answer to my question is no, explaining why I have to deal with the added traffic of the dog daycare business on a daily basis. I also hope, you heard last night, that a good number of people from the surrounding neighborhood have utilized Downfall, Lenway and Johnson Roads areas for their daily walks, the added traffic does not benefit that activity. Please be assured that as a long-term resident, appreciate the work that you do sincerely, Joanna Hogan, nine Downfall Road. This is from September twenty-seventh. Members of the planning board, I'm writing into voice my family's concern over the increased traffic frequency seen on neighborhood of Downfall Road due to the new business, Seacoast Canine. During the last meeting, the attorney representative of the business stated the trips would increase on weekends due to a potentially three training classes a day. This is a major concern to me and the safety of my daughter and the other children in the neighborhood, in this neighborhood. On the weekends is where, is when the children are outside playing and riding their bicycles and screwties. The thought of having traffic increase on this very narrow road during this very hot, same time of day is just downright dangerous for our children. I'm sure that the owner of the staff at Seacoast Canine have now realized that we have children in the neighborhood and will drive respectfully. However, my concern logically confines, I do not know that our little neighborhood potentially may be running late to the training class, is driving too fast or not paying attention, perhaps looking at their phone for directions. I do not want to wait until a child is hurt or worse. A lot of extra traffic in this neighborhood should be stopped. Report is too late. On the side though, the Seacoast Canine is allowed to operate with low increased traffic on this small residential road, will it open door in the future for others? On behalf of the safety of neighborhood children, Dr. O'Neil, four Lenway Road. Morning, gentlemen, good afternoon. I'm writing to you to express our concerns about the canine training and daycare business on Downfall Road. I have been a homeowner at thirty-two Downfall Road since 2009. I reside there with my daughter and three grandchildren, one nine, seven, and four years of age. We live into a hill on the street and the driveway of this business. My main concern is an increase in traffic, which definitely puts my grandchildren's safety at greater risk. The hill has always been a concern and the children know to stay to the side when they are on their road because there are no sidewalks. My grandchildren are often outside riding their bikes and walking to their friends' houses who live on Lenway Road. They also ride their bikes on the road in front of my house with caution and just from normal residential traffic. Keep in mind that there are only three homes beyond my driveway, one of which is the business operates. I know the expansion plan of this business is to have three classes with six clients in each class on Saturdays. That is eighteen vehicles driving classes in return trip, which equals thirty-six trips. This is all within the timeframe of when all, three of my grandchildren are playing outside and doesn't include when my other two grandchildren come to visit, which is very often, having a business at the end of a dead end residential road is bad enough. The increase in traffic will pose a much greater threat to the safety of my family. Thank you, Jill Stone, thirty-two Downfall Road.
Thank you, Peter. So let me see if I can summarize a bit of the numbers that we have in terms of the existing business and the proposal was first brought to us and, and then what has been talked about tonight. And so you can tell me if I'm wrong. So the existing business has one hundred and twenty trips a week, right?
All Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. The proposal that first came to us was to keep those one hundred and twenty trips and add thirty-six on the weekend, bringing a total of one hundred and fifty-six trips.
I believe the original proposal was still to decrease the Monday through Friday trips, but we proposed initially six classes on Saturday and Sunday with eight clients.
So the hundred and twenty trips that are being made today, which are the basis of all of your complaints. Monday through Friday. Jenny is proposing to cut that to sixty, meaning twelve per day, one each way of the people that are driving in and out of the facility. We haven't done a detailed traffic analysis to determine what each of you generate from your own use of going in and out to Market Basket and to wherever it is. But, you know, I know I go in and out six to seven times a day easily. So, no, there's a lot of traffic that we generate ourselves. So the extent of what I'm trying to think of is, I thought that when we first started this, I thought that it was unreasonable, the amount of traffic that was being talked about. I think that, and in particular, the, one of the major concerns that was talked about was the weekend traffic because that's when the kids were really out in the street. That's when you all were out in the street. And that the, her business time, which is between ten and two, ten and three?
Nine.
Ten and two was the period of time when most, most children were at school and most other people were at work. Okay. So, so it seemed to me that the proposal that's been made substantially makes it safer for everybody. And I think it's been responsive. The, I think the thing is to tie anything to the total number of trips. I mean, I don't know about how dogs are, it's an eighteen acre parcel, that's a lot of land. And if Jenny believes that she can handle thirty dogs on that, I think that's probably okay. But sixty trips has got to be the maximum, no matter what. And so the question is, how do we monitor that? And one way is that we can require Jenny, if we approve it, I'm not sure that's gonna happen, I'm not sure the board will, that she come in a year from the day that she's approved and give us a report. You come in and give us a report about what's been going on and we make it a... You come in and give us a report about what's been going on and we make a determination whether or not it's, the business is, is in consort with the decision that's been made or it's not. You know, we can put that as a condition. Right, counselor?
Yes, Ken.
Thank you. Right, counselors?
I'll do it.
So, so I think that there's been an effort made on the part of the applicant to listen to the community's concerns. And I applaud that because, believe me, I've been at this for a long, long time. And that doesn't always happen. It just doesn't. And so I, I think that she's been particularly responsive. And if we can have our, this attorney work with Martha to come up with something that makes sense, then I think that maybe this is, I believe, and I'm talking to my board members now, that this is potentially approvable. But it has to have very strict conditions placed on it because you are really concerned. And we, I mean, we've been here for four sessions and you have expressed your, your concerns. I've walked the street, I've driven the street, I understand exactly what it is. One of the things we thought about was whether or not we could petition the town to reduce the speed limit and put a, you know, speed limit, whatever. Well, they, the, the board of selection apparently according to the regional transit authority can only reduce it to 25 miles an hour, which is too fast. But we'd have to have a special study and I don't know the cost of that and I don't know, but whether or not we could have a no speed limit beyond, let's say 15 miles an hour with signs and all this other stuff. Might be helpful. Might be a way to regulate the speed on the road. So I'd like, I'd like Martha and our attorney to look at that as part of things that could be done. You know, the, I'm told that we don't like to do speed, what they call speed tables and speed bumps, but I still would like to have that looked at, whether or not that makes sense. Because it's done all throughout the United States and I realize it's a difficult thing to do in a snow area, but it has been done. And so there are other kinds of things that we might be able to look at. So I don't think we're at a decision right now, but I, I guess I'd like to get board members' response to what I've said.
I, I agree with that. When I first heard the proposal with as many trips that were involved, I said, I don't think so. Just too many. And I think I implied that to you here for one of the meetings. The reduction that I see is very good. And the question of additional traffic, there are some cars in downfall road area that will, nothing to do with Jenny and nothing to do with you, they'll come in and out. And they might not be the same. So it's hard to say that's one of Jenny's trips or not. But I think you know who's coming in and who's coming out. And I think if you let people know what the cars look like, licensed place, which they probably won't be able to see even, oh, maybe 20 miles an hour they can.
Part of our proposal is to put magnets on the doors of the cars.
I was gonna come with that next, just to identify the cars.
Yeah.
And if you can do that, then it's more viable that we can, or they can, identify the trips. Whether there's, might be no identification, which I did. And I thought it's very difficult to stay at 20 miles an hour. It's a nice road. So you get side roads coming off, everybody's involved, it'll be more traffic as house changes. You know, good people come in, they come in with kids, they have to take kids to school. It's always changing, no matter what. So I would be in favor, but if everybody else is.
If we can work out some of the conditions.
I, I agree with George. I think we were all a little kind of going holy smokes when you first came in. But I think you, you have gone a long way to try to make this work for everybody. And I think what you have now, I would almost call, it might be a little bit of an increase, but it's a managed increase. It's your key. So you, you will have some control over that and I think that's something. So I think with certain conditions of maybe not to exceed 40 dogs and that sort of thing, I could find my way to, uh, prove it.
Peter?
I would, I would kind of echo what you said. The mitigation that you've done to the original plan is significant. There's no more weekends and you've reduced the car traffic by 50%. The fact that you're ready to identify your vehicles so that people will know the vehicles, you have an employee policy in place, issue, probably technologies can help with monitoring. I think these are all positive things and I think working very hard on the community to, to really work to come to a resolution because you do have a business and you have a right to have that business. And you're now modifying your business to really help be a good neighbor as your business continues. So that's encouraging.
So do we need to be specific about one of the, the things that we're talking about or can you, based on the notes that you've taken, Martha, work with Brian and come up with something for our next session that maybe is something we could vote on? Or is that, or do you want us to give you specific direction right now?
I guess if there are any things, you've talked about, you know, the number of trips, living number of dogs, the possibility of, you know, having a timeline on special permit or setting or something.
Right. Signage of the cars. Signage of the cars. Maybe going, yeah. So I mean, if you can take those kinds of things and put them into a decision working with Brian to, then we'll take a look at it at our next meeting. Okay?
Keep the hearing open.
Keep the hearing open, yeah. I would say we should keep, we shouldn't close it. Yeah, we shouldn't close it. Right, right, right.
And I've also been taking notes along the way. I've shot it down to a non-categorical areas where I think you've identified where you'd want to see those parameters that work in condition. So I feel, based on the discussion and the comments of the board, that I have sufficient guidance to reduce those conditions that you could consider.
Okay. Okay, any other comment from the board members? Avery?
I was just gonna ask, the, the number of dogs is obviously limited also by her pet licenses. So she's totally within the bounds of what she could do.
You can just say it twice, belts and suspenders.
Yeah. Can we limit the number of trips?
Yeah.
Because she's, you know, that, that could change if you give her more employees.
What we're tying it to right now is 60. That's what.
Okay.
Martha's gonna write 60, no more than 60 per week.
Per week.
Per week.
Per day also, so that should be broken down 12 a day.
Well, we haven't had it written so far.
Okay.
Yes.
Could it be feasible, instead of waiting for a year, could it be feasible for that to, that report, weekly report, from when having trips are made each week?
I don't know. You really usually want a business to be operating for about a year to see, in fact, to judge its impact. A year is a reasonable amount of time. I think the first week might be a little too soon because, I mean, hopefully it stays constant, right, and it doesn't change. But I think that you all, because you all will be reacting in the first week. It'll take you all, because you all have different schedules. It'll take you a month or so to say, well, it's working or it's not working. So I think, my instinct is, I don't think, I don't think, I think that's too tight.
Six months?
Maybe. But let them draw something, okay?
Can I just ask, begin, so all the trips would be around the hours of nine in the morning and three in the afternoon? They wouldn't be like at nine and 11 and 1? Are you saying?
All the driving would take place between nine and 10 and then two and three. So our goal for the program we run is to have the dogs there at 10 and start the training of the program.
Cause I heard somebody say something about like four hour days, but then six hours. So I was a little concerned that some dogs, they come at night noon and then dogs noon to three, but that's not the case. It's like.
Right, cause part of the training program is that they arrive together to train and then they leave together.
Okay.
So that at least, you know, right now we stagger it because we have to, but ideally we'd like it to be streamlined.
And I would also, you may want, I mean, I don't know if we can do that. There's a very busy school bus stop. I don't know if you've noticed it taking, and it's, the timing to that can be a little, cause I think the bus, one of the buses.
Except for Triton, is it for the grammar school?
For the grammar school. And I think they let out at like 3:15.
Yeah, they're a little later.
It's about three, the times you get.
Triton usually, the Triton bus usually stops off around 2:15.
Yep.
And then the elementary school stops off around 3:15.
Triton gets at a 2:13 and N S is at 3.
Yeah, just so because the little kids, it's more important that they, they, all the trips.
So the point is, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And so in, you know, maybe just reference that in, in your work that you're doing about what, what the school bus schedule is for that stop.
Because in February, March, that 15 feet becomes eight and nine.
Good point. Good point. Okay. Board members, I think that we have to vote to request this to be done. Have a motion for that and then a motion to continue. And then have a, a motion to continue the meeting to, two weeks from now? Two weeks? Seven days?
Is there anything else up on that?
Might have the Orchard Street, but, but it's not a public, it's the only public hearing, so please, they deserve to have a meeting, but they don't have to wait.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So could I have a motion on directing Bernie and Martha to draw up conditions?
Some.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then let's have a, let's have a, a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move to continue the public hearing on special permit application of dog daycare training play group to 35 downfall road to October 17th at 7?
7:05.
7:05.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we're done with this now. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know what I would say, some of the people that were down and walking on me, the ones that worked at the fertility.
I mean, the interesting thing about the gulf center is, we're not gonna see them. They're totally. Less the building.
It's the strangest term in the world.
You can hang around, you wanna hang around?
If you have more business?
We have more business. Let's just check here. Well, we have these general bylaw amendments that we've been talking about for some time, about solar noise, OSRD, and wireless communications. And the question is, are we prepared to work on these things for the April town meeting? I'm not sure that, I know we've been spending, Martha and I have been spending so much time on finishing up the master plan, that. I know that Jeff is very interested in the wireless communications, and I really haven't looked at that bylaw at all lately, so I don't know what needs to be done.
Well, it's drafted in 2001, so I think, I think it needs some change.
There are some technical issues in there that probably don't need to be there.
Have you looked at?
Yep, I've read it, yes.
Do we know how 5G is gonna affect all the towns, and what the feds are gonna do about that?
Wow, what is that?
No clue. Okay, well. Apparently that's the next level of wireless internet connection, and it's my understanding, like with the Federal Communications Act, that there will be additional restrictions on what a town can and cannot require. That's all we know, that's it.
Well, that's important.
So, you know, before we go too crazy on the wireless communications, then we probably.
Could you, could you further inform us and do some research on it?
Yeah, I just don't think there's much to be had yet.
Oh, okay. Okay. I know nothing about it.
There's a few material.
Jeff and I were just, Jeff and I were just responding.
Just had to get the last word in, no. Thank you.
Where, where we live, we never have cell phone service. You know, it's just, I can't send texts, I can't receive texts, I can't talk to George.
That's right.
Right? You have the same problem, don't you?
No, well, it's my fault.
Oh.
I used to. See, we did not have the tower, or a tower.
So, on the solar, I know we did a lot of work last year. I think we're just, obviously, we're all kind of waiting to see what happens with, with our lawsuit, right, or their lawsuit. And I haven't heard anything, have you?
Yeah.
Anybody hear anything? That's now five months old.
Could be, I don't remember when it's five.
So I don't know what's gonna happen. I haven't heard a word from Borrego, I haven't heard a word from the Courtney Drive people.
Well, Borrego is proceeding at risk.
Yeah. But we did wanna take a look at the solar ordinance though, and see whether or not what we should do with it. Where did you guys, you were working on that too.
I was working on it somewhat, there wasn't a problem, I had five or six items, we wanted to correct.
Yeah.
I'd have to go look at my notes, but.
We got, we got way late, we had too many busy items.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't know, I guess we should talk these things through and see which one might be a priority, and what do we wanna focus on? I'm not sure if that's up there right now. I don't, what do you think?
I think there are things that we could, that would benefit from being addressed, given the discussions that we had during the public hearing process. Tied it up.
In solar.
In solar.
Yeah, I agree.
And there are a couple of conflicting items, primarily dealing with trees, actually, that have to be cleaned up.
Right, and there are also, you know, some criteria we might want to, and we talked about doing this, the smart programs, when they're down in the car, you're into the smart program, and the others and subtractors.
Well, one other thing, I mean, do we want to be more specific about clearing trees? I mean, they're clearing 12 acres of trees. Is that a good idea? Because the Massachusetts now strongly, strongly discourages, I think that's the word, in their new guidelines. But they don't say prohibit. And so.
Which is what we did in ours. We strongly discourage.
Strongly discourage, so do you want to prohibit?
Can, can we do that?
Well, let's see.
Has the power for us.
Right, I mean, see, I always say, you don't know until you've written it up and you test it.
But it still represents use.
Cannot prohibit or unreasonably regulate, so the question comes up, and you can look at examples of other communities that have pushed the limit a little bit more and tried.
Well, we could say we encourage it.
There isn't enough case law.
We encourage it in the BLI units and in certain parts of AR, but not in those AR districts that are, that are woodland, which is most of the town.
Could I pose a question to your board and Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you can.
I know the state says not to overly regulate or prohibit. Would an overlay district be overly regulating or prohibitive if we went to an overlay district, the solar uses?
Ultimately, I mean, just having an overlay district isn't the question, it's how you regulate within the overlay district, so it's not the, you know, creating more opportunities isn't ever the problem, it's restricting those opportunities. And can you impose, you know, performance conditions and site conditions that are tantamount to an unreasonable regulation or prohibition? That's the ultimate question. There just isn't enough case law in this, this area. It's obviously a booming, you know, area in terms of industry, but in terms of cases that have challenged bylaws, challenged decisions, and going through the process, there aren't.
Massachusetts is second only to California in the amount of solar.
It's amazing.
I mean, it's.
Some, there's really no legal way that we could set aside a couple of areas in town for that use, and it wouldn't be allowed in other uses, would that be too, it wouldn't be allowed in other areas.
No, no, some towns have done various similar things. They've created areas of the town where it's more restrictive than other areas, where it's less restrictive.
I mean, when we first started this, we said, "Let's just put it in the BLI," or on Route 1. And we said, we thought, then we went and looked at what the state was saying, we said, "Oh, that's too restrictive." So we can't do that, let's open it up, so then we did.
We don't have enough large zoning districts, some are small and some are larger, but agricultural residential is by far the largest. Now, as far as an overlay district is concerned, developers of solar power want to be close to power lines, existing ones, they can take their load. There aren't many in town that can do that. So what you have is the old railroad line from Georgetown through Scotland Road and so on. Most of it goes to Martin Burns Forest, so there's a little piece between the, West End and Martin Burns to, I think the other end is.
It's like a solar corridor. It really is.
One thing I do know, because I have a little experience in this, the solar developers do have the option to upgrade the line. Most of them just don't wanna do that. Because that was in question in Cairo at one point, I've been involved with, these things are often on for about eight years now. You know, they can upgrade the line, and I just question if it's the, you know, the town's job to facilitate areas that are near perfect power lines for this industry. It's a profitable industry, and it's absolutely an industrial, you know, it's not a manufacturing situation, but you're manufacturing electricity, you know, there are radio waves and things that come off it. And even special permits in general, I mean, among the Board of Selectmen, I'm here as a citizen tonight, not representing the Board at all. Since I've been selectman, some of the most emotional and divisive battles are to do with special permits. And I walked into one tonight.
Yeah.
And I knew exactly the pressure you folks are under at that table, that is a very, very tough situation to be in. You know, I know even with the ag stuff, I'm a farmer, so I mean, I recuse myself from any discussion of that, but you know, the ag regulations are absolutely a little bit lax in town. You know, this, you know, it can create unintentional loopholes. It's, it's tough, I. The town's tax situation isn't where it was 10, 15 years ago, went on in dire straits. And I, I feel like, instead of mixing everything together in town collaboratively, you know, in my own world, I wish we could work together to set aside zones, basically that are nearly unbreakable. And it would protect the character of the town forever.
There's no, in my understanding of the, the tax agreements that have been made for Middle Road and what was being proposed for Courtney Drive. I mean, a million dollar a house subdivision does a lot better.
I fully agree. A large shoulder array seems to provide us no more than three or four homes with a tax revenue.
That's right.
And we get zero benefit from the.
As, and if, depending on who the provider is, there's some providers out there who, who really go overboard to provide power to the town. There's a guy who used to be the head of State EPA developers, do you know that guy? Developers, you know him, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he's the CEO of a company down, that they operate on the South Shore. The first thing he does, he promises electricity to the town. And, you know, but we didn't get any of that from Borrego.
No, it seems very rare with that approach.
Yeah.
Newbury.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you had that, then that's a clear public benefit that you really wanna work on.
Right, that's how I'm gonna argue with.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the answer is, that's why I'm here tonight. I mean, there are no easy answers for this, but I'm absolutely willing to uptake in the process, as you guys.
Well, I think that maybe we'll set something up, as I said, Martha and I are concentrating on getting the master plan done, and I think that might be done in a month or so.
And I understand the workload you both, you guys deal with a tremendous amount of things, and they all become very complex.
But maybe, but maybe, maybe before the end of the year, we could get back into this with, and once you get into it, we can have it done by town meeting. Don't you think? Yeah, I mean, it's not that, it's just having, having the, having the courage to do, to come up and do the thing, to say, "This is what we're proposing."
Right.
So I think that makes some sense.
Special permits, I mean, basically allow, I mean, the process, it doesn't have to be available for everybody in every community in the Commonwealth, or there are communities with no special permit process.
Where it's all by right?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah. Sure. It's tough to do that, though.
Is it?
Well, like, so, by right, where would you have it by right?
Probably along, like you said, I agree.
Yeah, and that's it. And that's it. And like, what, what did we do with marijuana? Marijuana, we did in just the BLI.
BLI and then Commercial Highway.
Commercial Highway.
Was there a little piece up on Scotland Road by the bus company yet?
Yeah, we initially looked at that, but.
I don't know if that ever panned out or not.
No, it didn't. I think we just did Pearson. We've had, you know, no demand, whereas every town around us.
It's funny, isn't it?
Yeah, well, they got water and they got sewer, this is a huge water use. Huge, and, and so, what, Groveland, Georgetown?
Amesbury.
Amesbury, Rowley?
Rowley, yeah.
Ipswich, they all have.
Well, it's pragmatic with all that interest elsewhere, we're not gonna heavily demand, probably.
I would guess not, yeah.
But that's, I just wanna thank you all, like I said, I know what your work looks like, and I thank you for attaining these things again, because there's just so much to do. Stacking more on revisiting things, it's.
Yeah, no, but it has to be done, because, I mean, witness the Borrego slash Courtney, Courtney Drive, it was.
It gets painful.
Three years, three years.
For me, it's been painful to watch special permits divide neighborhoods.
Oh, yes.
I guess that's it, that's it in a nutshell. People end up resenting each other. It's not healthy for the town, and we all need to kind of band together to, you know, get things.
I mean, it's good, yeah.
You have a lot to do. We know that.
Well, you're right. And so, solar, okay, noise, we're gonna see if we can add here, it's quarter.
Yes.
Noise, that's something that the building commissioner is interested in, we made preliminary investigations into it. And it's, and it's, I think what he's after is construction noise, not so much operate, 'cause we don't have businesses that make noise. But, but construction times, we don't really limit, either in our, only when we do it ourselves. But there's no ordinance that we have in town of a, you know, work starts at 8:00, you can, you know, assemble all of your workers at 7:00, but you don't start until 8:00, you finish at 5:00. Nothing on Sundays, we have nothing that says that, so I think.
It's a general ordinance.
We need a general ordinance.
Yes.
And it would make Sam's life a lot easier, 'cause he gets complaints all the time, and.
We'd be able to find one we can copy, aren't they pretty common, such as that?
Oh, well, yes, it all depends, though. So for example, I was looking at Brooklines, you don't want Brooklines. I mean.
It's 14 pages.
No leaf blowers, I mean, no, nothing. I mean, no nothing, you know? I mean, they're out there with their hand mowers. But there are some towns that, you know, are more like ours, like Ipswich, and that do have noise ordinances, and we've looked at them, and so we should be able to copy from that. So maybe we could do that, those two, what do we wanna do in OSRD?
The reason I put that in there, and this is something that's come to our attention recently, because it's something that I've been working with town council recently, there is a provision in there that actually, there's a recent court case which basically invalidates that provision, so we need to.
And validates the OSRD?
No, no, just one provision.
Oh, what is it? What is it?
There's a provision in it that said, any development of more than four parcels has to go through the OSRD, and I think it was the Wall Street case that Lisa gave us that said that, that was overturned or something, so. We need to take a look at that.
Well, that should be simple, huh?
Should be simple.
Oh, well, then, let's do that. I mean, it's just technical, it sounds like, right? And then, and then the wireless, I, I think that might be the more difficult, but since you're gonna do all the research on it, get it back to us.
I just have to wait for the fences to make the rules?
No, we might not know whether it makes sense to do something.
All right. Maybe we'll just call in that, there are some other things you have on here, but I, I think we did the Merrick Valley Planning Commission, and we did your town planners' report, did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, just, I, I was gonna give out a hand around the CPTC fall courses, and I'll just email back to everybody.
And we can talk about the November schedule in, at the next meeting, so.
That's fine.
Will you be here?
I will be here. I will be here, yes. And then, all these other, have you been able to, is it? Concon?
I missed the last meeting.
Okay. Okay. And Planning Commission, as I said before, we had a, it was really nice, good, 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 they did a focus on Newbury at the Merrick Valley Planning Commission last two, two, two Thursdays ago, and they talked about the work that John O'Connell has done with the EMS force staff, and all the work that Jeff and Peter Pippin do in the marsh, and the fact that we had the housing production plan, it was the first one in the region that was approved, and so they've done a lot of work. It's really good, so, can we get that all for free?
Right.
Mostly.
The town invested on some of your part, especially yours.
But it's great, it's a great investment, you know, they did, now we pay for it, but they did the transportation element in the master plan for us, and did a nice credit.
It's nice having resources like that.
It's, oh, nice, it's great.
I couldn't do my job without them, the mind map and everything else that they provide for us, it's, it's really wonderful.
So are we okay to adjourn, do you think? Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, I just put my glasses on the case, move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's 10 minutes.